Good evening and welcome to the September 14, 2015, meeting of the Town Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the pleasure of the ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, could you please take the roll?
Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Mr. Bealy?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. DuPont?
Yep.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Thank you, and just a quick note that with all board members, President Ms. Ogless and Mr. Bealy will both be alternates this evening for voting purposes. Next item is approval of the minutes from the October 24, 2015, meeting.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous with one extension? Thank you. Three quick housekeeping notes about agenda items. We have three items this evening which have been tabled at the request of the applicants. Item number five, Frank Marston requesting site plan amendment review for 55 Spring Street, assessor's map R-37 lot 26. Item number 11, Kenneth Grandin requesting shoreline zone approval for 299 Gorham Road, assessor's map R-35 lot 9D. And number 12, Comfort Keepers requesting a site plan review for amendments to 253 U.S. Route 1, assessor's map U-43 lot 3. Again, those have all been tabled at the request of the applicants. Next item on our agenda will be a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 405, Scarborough zoning ordinance to establish a small batch processing facility, use and definition, performance standards, and the zoning districts in which to allow these facilities. I know we have a presentation from Karen Martin from SEDCO, and would you like to introduce this one?
Yes, please. Again, my name is Karen Martin. I'm the Director of the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Dan Bacon and the Long Range Planning Committee and the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation, and we want to bring you, which is the second in a series of two amendments to the zoning ordinance that really deals with what we're calling small batch processing. And this discussion, the term "small batch processing" really came out of some of our discussions with regard to looking at food production companies. And what we were looking at originally was food production companies in some of the commercial zones. We're thinking of the very small folks who are doing jams and jellies, and maybe they need 1,000 square feet. They're really doing their production on-site, making small batches, and really not having a significant impact with regard to parking or the traditional things that you would be concerned about with an industrial use, which is where they would be categorized in the current ordinance. So in looking at that, we felt like in some of the commercial zones, it really could accommodate them as long as we were limiting them in size, and we're talking about certain performance standards that they have to meet. But in addition to some of the food production uses, we realized that there are a whole host of smaller companies that might be jewelry makers or dressmakers, that ilk of business, who if you read the, you know, the ordinance in specifics, they would really be required to be in the industrial zone. And we felt like really those guys could be accommodated in some of our commercial zones, particularly in the B-2, the B-3, some of the mixed-use zones as well. And that's really where this came from. It was an attempt to make it easier for some of these smaller companies to locate in different areas of town, allow them to have more choice in their commercial land development, and also have more choice, I think, for some of the commercial areas in terms of the types of uses that could locate there. It seemed to be a really good fit, and that's really what this amendment does tonight. One, it looks at a definition of small batch processing, and we tried to look at it in terms of both, it's a process that has some element of hand design or hand processing or hand development. It is a use that would make something from start to finish. It's not piecemeal. It's not making something for another industrial use. So we felt like we could really define it in that way, and we would be able to use that definition of small batch processing. We've also added the performance standards that we've talked about before with respect to noise and compatibility. You know, we're not looking at a use that would be needing to have a FedEx delivery every 10 minutes. We really do want it to be compatible with the surrounding uses. And that's really the quality of the ordinance changes that we're talking about. And I will give you some specific examples, too. There are some businesses within town that came to us after we started discussing this and basically are saying, "Well, you know, but for this change, we would have to be looking at other places to locate," because they couldn't do what they wanted to do at their existing site. So we're very pleased that, you know, in our efforts to look at where companies are and what types of uses are being developed in today's economy, that we're perhaps one step ahead of, you know, being able to accommodate some new development and some smaller-scale developments that I think really makes a lot of sense for Scarborough. With that, I think I'll just stop and see if there are questions, and I can clarify if need be.
Thanks, Karen. Before we take it up at the board level, this is a public hearing, and so I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Just ask that you provide your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes. I'll open the public hearing. Don't be shy. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Susan, would you like to start us off?
This is another in a series of attempts by the Long Range Planning Committee, the planning department, and SEDCO to make sure that we're on the leading edge versus the back edge of what's happening when it comes to the needs of our business, professional, and commercial client, of present residents, present businesses, and those that want to come in. And we discovered, as Karen just explained, that there really is this growing need for places for people who are doing small batch, use your imagination. There's just so much of it out there, especially here in Maine. We do a lot of small business. And I think this is a wonderful idea, and I hope that the board and the council okayes it. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger, do you have anything?
Just this, I'm just glad that we're being proactive in this, and I think it's a good move. So I applaud the various groups that were involved with this, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Nick.
And thank you. I, too, think this is a great idea. I do have a couple of questions. One is just out of sheer curiosity. Probably both are by sheer curiosity. Is there a process behind determining, so if somebody says, "I want to, I'm craft brewing," and is there a process, and who makes that determination whether or not they fit into this definition?
So we talked a lot about that when we were crafting this particular ordinance. So the way it's going to work is, number one, it does every instance where someone wants to do a small batch processing facility, whether it's in an existing space or it's new, comes before the planning board. And what the planning board is going to do is look at that set of criteria and make that determination. So at this point, we're saying, even if it's going into an existing space, it comes before the planning board. We've talked about it, in fact, Dan and I talked about it today, whether or not, you know, a streamlined form might be useful for applicants so they can really address those couple of standards that we've put in there. The other piece, and I know it's always a question, well, how, each industry is different, and what we really believe is, it's up to the applicant to tell us how their business is going to work and why they believe they fall under our concept of small batch processing. And for things like brewers, and everybody's got a different standard. In fact, the craft brewers have some very specific definitions about what brewing is. We considered, do we put those in the ordinance? And if we did that, we would start having to go to every, you know, industrial group and ask what their standards are, and it begins to be a complicated ordinance. So we really wanted to put it back on the applicant and say, "Tell us about your process," and help the planning board make that decision about whether or not you're going to fit in with the neighborhood. Use your own standards, if you like, in terms of industry standards and how things are being made, but will be the, the planning board is the final arbiter of whether or not they meet the standards.
All right, thank you. And the language, did you grab this from another town or another city?
Combination of both. We looked at ordinances across the country. Small batch processing was something that was often referred to, and again, the difference between small batch processing and normal processing, you know, is that you make the product from start to finish. You're not piecemealing it, you're not doing a segment and then sending it someplace else. So that's part of it. The words "handcrafted" or "hand-designed" really is in a lot of ordinances across the country, and we did pull that out, recognizing that there's a little ambiguity there, but I think there's enough there that when you're talking about design, the person working at the business is the one who's actually got their hands in the process and in the design of the product.
Thank you. That's it, and I think this is a good piece to start with.
Thanks. Thanks.
Yeah, a couple of things. I find it interesting that you specifically picked on medical marijuana, since that's an issue that will become an issue, I think, for every town and in the near future. And I'm all in favor of this. I mean, I think that this opens up all sorts of avenues, the potential of people and businesses coming into Scarborough, and I think we need that very much. I will say, will be interesting if we have any of the microbreweries, though, that come in, and I have some connection to that situation, so. But they have very strict standards, to be honest with you, from scratch, beginning to end, and I, you know, I can go on for a long time about that. And I'd love to see a microbrewery come into Scarborough, and this may be a format for us to facilitate that. Good job. Good job for the Long Range Planning Committee. Kudos to all you guys.
Thanks. John?
I'm actually agree with everybody. Good with this, this is great ordinance. I've got something in common that's not necessarily for here, but maybe afterward would comment on section four, page two, regarding enforcement of odors and whatever. It doesn't need to be discussed at this point. I'm all for this, but we just need to, we're going to do this, we're going to put this sort of project in every particular area, but there's some odor issues that need to be addressed, and I'm not sure that the enforcement is strong enough to deal with that, but it doesn't need to be dealt with with this particular piece. Or did, but I'm happy with it.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. Yeah, I, too, am generally in favor of this proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, and who can argue about, you know, having small facilities, being able to locate in areas in town that they currently can't. I do find there is a fair amount of subjectivity, though, that comes with this ordinance, so it's going to be interesting, I think, in that kind of a discussion where an applicant would come forward to the planning board, and I just wonder how that discussion might go as far as whether planning board members will feel needing more specifics in how to apply their judgment. Have you seen any cases where these kinds of ordinances have been problematic or success stories, maybe?
I haven't. I have certainly seen some success stories in other parts of the country, particularly there's so much research on the brewers right now, so there is a lot there. I do understand the concern about subjectivity, and we have, again, talked a lot about that in-house. And it, you know, it may be helpful to really look at some general policy guidelines in terms of giving the applicant some better information about how to answer the questions, and that may be a stuff that staff really needs to do. We want it to be extremely cautious this first time around in making sure that everyone who is going through this process, even if you're doing a tiny little bit in an existing building, that everybody has to come through and be reviewed by the body. So we are aware of the subjectivity and trying to be flexible. We err a little on the subjectivity.
Now, maybe a question for Jay. How does this fit with other ordinances as they relate to small businesses, such as like home businesses? Would this only, would this be only applicable to the zones that it speaks to?
Correct. Yes, yep. It's being applied to a number of the commercial, industrial districts.
Okay. And I have a question on the medical marijuana exclusion. Why are we excluding that? And maybe for Jay also, do we have places in town that processing medical marijuana is allowed, specifically codified for that?
We do have places. It's been, and maybe Karen can speak to why it's excluded here, but it's been largely considered an allowed use in our industrial districts, and so that's where it has been permitted to be down.
Do we have, do we have an ordinance that speaks to that? That limits there?
I'm not, I'm not in a position to speak to the specifics, but I believe it's been classified in the uses allowed in the industrial district as sort of a manufacturing production. I believe that's what we've been classifying it as, and I know the town attorney had weighed in, the zoning administrator, planning director, spent a lot of time trying to figure out what this fits under, and so, and that was the zone it was found to fit the use classification. As I said, I believe it's the production and manufacturing provision, and if I'm mistaken on that, maybe Karen can speak.
I think there was an abundance of caution with respect to the potential impacts of that particular industry, and at least for now, we wanted to exclude it as we move forward with this. It could be reconsidered later.
Right. I guess I would only say that I would be more comfortable if we had a strict definition of what medical marijuana is, and then that definition makes it fit in the zones that it's allowed, as opposed to specifically announcing in this amendment that it's not allowed. Because, of course, we could, we could mention many types of activities. I mean, why stop at this? I know that we all have a few on the tip of our tongues, so, you know, I would prefer that it not be in the definition, if you will.
Okay, not be excluded.
Yeah, well, just not be mentioned.
Okay.
And the definition of medical marijuana, as the town defines it, would take care of where it would be allowed.
Okay. Great comment. Let's, Jay and Dan and I can look at that and see if...
But thank you for your hard work. I do appreciate it, and it reads quite well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. I definitely support this as well. I had the opportunity to be involved with formulation of this on the, on LURFIC, and as Karen indicated and Susan mentioned as well, it was a very deliberate process, and I think hopefully resulted in what's a proactive but thoughtful ordinance. I definitely hear some questions and concerns about, you know, the devil in some of the details in terms of enforcement and subjectivity and how it really works when the rubber hits the road. I think that's kind of the nature of the beast when, anytime there's a new ordinance, we've gone through that in some different ways on the cell tower front, and we've kind of been feeling our way through some of that, and I like Karen's term "abundance of caution." I think that applies to a lot of this, and I think the, I think, in my opinion, this strikes a good balance between being proactive and fairly inclusionary, casting a wide net, and then we sort of see, we sort of see how that goes and whether certain things might need to be revisited. But I think, for example, in an area like Higgin's Parkway, this is another example of something that hopefully creates, opens the door to some more opportunities as the town thinks about how to adjust the expectations and the goals there, hopefully in a way that helps that area develop in a positive way. So pretty clear collectively, we have overwhelming support here, and Susan, do you have anything else?
I would like to just come back with one brief comment to the subjectivity issue. This is one of my soapbox issues, so any chance I get to address this, I take it. I think that that's a lot of what's been going on in zoning in Scarborough, certainly, and other towns as well, is trying to leave room for people to get together and talk about what is the best way to do something. It started with the design standards, which, if you remember, were originally design guidelines because we wanted to get the input from the various people involved, and that's subjective. It really is a subjective thing, whether or not something fits the guidelines. You have to sort of have an agreement as to what the underlying desire is, and as long as the ordinance states what the goal is, then I think that the planning board, which is really going to be, which is why I'm bringing it up, hint, hint, it's our responsibility. It's going to be the responsibility of this board to figure out whether or not it fits the definition. So I think it makes our job interesting. It makes it not cookie cutter, and it allows people to come in who might have some new and unique things to offer that just don't fit. So thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. And I think along those lines, too, it's one of the challenges of these ordinances, and again, we've seen, I think we'll see it a little bit on the cell towers as well, is that it's difficult to be, to try and capture everything in the ordinance when you're talking about changing technologies and standards and processes, so I think that's another argument for having it be a little more open and subjective and not overly prescriptive, and then we have the ability to collectively deliberate on those things. So again, clearly have unanimous support here, and Mike, do you have anything else?
So what's the process now? Does it go back to the council with our comments?
It does, yes.
So our comments will accompany?
Right.
Okay. And I just have that one exception.
I think that is a good comment. Thanks. Unless there are any other comments, we will move on.
Yep.
Again, item number five was tabled. Item number six on the agenda, Risbera Brothers Construction Company requests final subdivision review for an amendment to the Thibodeaux subdivision for the addition of seven new residential lots, assessor's map R-40, lot one. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, this is an item the board has previously seen a few times and has actually received its preliminary approval earlier in the summer. As noted, this is for a subdivision in the R-2 district. The applicant's going through the conservation subdivision design. As noted, this applicant was actually before the board at your last meeting. They've addressed a number of the concerns that were previously addressed, and you will have received comments from planning staff as well as Order and Curran, the town's peer review engineer. In essence, I know at our last meeting, there was some discussion about stormwater approach. The applicant has been in touch with our town engineer and engineer from Order and Curran. The general concept and direction of stormwater is going in the right path. There's some final details to be worked out, but we think those are items that can be readily handled if the board's comfortable as a condition of approval. The last meeting, there was some discussion about a landscape guarantee. The applicant's response indicates they're willing to put forth that as part of the performance guarantee for the project. Let's see, we also previously talked about, as board members will note, in conservation subdivision designs typically try to maintain at least a 25, or at least a minimum 25-foot setback from the upland edge of a wetland. The applicant has requested, given sort of the abundance of open space they have and some of the site characteristics, if there could be an overlap between the 25-foot setback and the 15-foot building setback on some of the lots, so areas would remain undisturbed on lot lines, and the board seemed generally acceptable of that approach. Staff just echoes their prior comment that there may be consideration to do some further hardscaping just in those areas to be sure that those areas are well delineated beyond the standard no disturb pins. The applicant has provided DEP and Army Corps permits, and staff did have a comment about a note on the plan, but we have received a revised note from the applicant's engineer today and did have ample time to review that, and we're comfortable that that note has been adequately revised. So with that, Mr. Chair, staff has prepared a draft motion if the board is so inclined this evening. There would probably be at least one change to one of the conditions, again, should the board get there this evening.
Thanks, Jay. I'll turn it over to Mr. Risbera.
Good evening. I'm Rocky Risbera. Nancy St. Clair couldn't be with us tonight. I don't have a nice presentation like Nancy usually has, but I will echo Jay's comments. We've been before you. I think this is our fourth time at the planning board. We have had a sit walk. We think we have things in order for final approval tonight. I would like to address the one item that I think we do have outstanding, and that is some stormwater details, and we have met with the town engineer and gone over some details, and we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning at, tomorrow afternoon at 1:00, I believe, or 1:30, to work out some final details, but I think we're on board. I've gone through the notes. Nancy has gone through the notes and feels very confidently that we're, that we can meet the requirements that town's engineer would like to see us meet. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions and hopefully could get a final approval tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this stage?
I'll just say, I apologize for missing the last meeting, but the hammerhead changed, did it not? Was it going the other direction before?
Uh, no.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay. So I had it backwards.
Did you miss two meetings?
Did I miss the last two? No.
No.
Oh, right. Maybe. It would appear so, right?
But the hammerhead did stay where it was for various reasons, and I'm trying to, trying to remember what they were, but we went through a bunch of iterations on the way out and whatnot.
We did, we did, because that was one of our original questions, and it wasn't possible.
It wasn't going to work.
It wasn't going to work. Okay. All right. Go first.
Chris, Mike? Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else? John?
Fine. Great project.
Ron? Nick?
No question.
Roger? Susan?
Of course. I'm going to be real honest, I don't think it's a great project. I don't like all these wetlands being disturbed, and I won't forever like it, but as I always say, at this opportunity, with the ordinances as they are and with the land as it's given, this is a really good project. It's done the best that can be done to protect the wetlands, which is, of course, my primary concern. I'm sure, because the thing is that we always know where to find Rocky. If it doesn't work out right, we know where to find him, so it works for me. I do have a question when it comes to making a draft motion, but shall I reserve my question until we do that?
Go ahead.
Well, under conditions, it talks about no disturbed wetland setback delineation. Do we need to spell out what we mean by that? Because there was discussion about the fact that there was, we wanted some hardscape features such as the SAF comments, split rail fence to further reduce chances of encroachment.
I guess that was a question staff has. Is that something the board's interested in? So far, I haven't heard that that is, so...
Well, that's one of the things I would like to request, is that the delineation, and if it has to be put in the conditions, that's fine, but the no disturbed wetland setback delineation, and I don't know how to word this. We have to decide what kind of hardscape feature we want, or can we just, why don't we ask the applicant?
Could I, could I address that?
Why don't we ask the applicant?
Our plan is to address it with some buffer pins in areas where it made sense to me that we ought to have some pins. I personally feel like, as a contractor on the job, people pay more attention to pins, and I know that there are other people who have other ideas, but there will be some buffer pins in along the back of where this house is, over here where... where the buffer kind of comes up into the lot.
Well, are we concerned only with encroachment from development, or are we also concerned about encroachment of people who own houses encroaching upon the use of the wetlands around them? I mean, I'm asking a question that I'm asking staff.
Yeah, I think generally it's more the long term, because certainly, as you just noted, when the developer goes in, one of the things that we've begun working with developers on is being sure that before construction begins, that we're delineating those with something that's highly visible, you know, whether that's orange snow fencing, something that's pretty temporary till those final pins go in. But we have seen instances where the pins, you know, are...
So, we're not concerned about delineating this in order to keep somebody who has a residence from overstepping their bounds into the wetlands?
I would say that's the principal concern. I think we have more control over developer, because...
Because pins, for me, aren't going to do that, right? We need something in the term, in, I mean, sorry. You feel as if no one's going to be down in there? Is that why?
No, I feel like if there are some buffer pins delineating that, then someone's going to see that iron pin and know, they're at least going to ask, all right, what does that mean? If they refer back to their plan, they're going to see right on the plan, it's clearly shown. Jay had talked about, you know, some rocks or some fencing or whatnot. I mean, I really don't want to fence the entire open space off. I don't think it's warranted. I thought that if we concentrated on some areas that looked kind of like an obvious place where someone might want to try to encroach, that that would be adequate. And again, I thought pins would work, but if we could do some pieces of fence or...
Yeah, and I think Mr. Rizberra sort of talked about, it's not the full length, because there actually isn't sort of the crossover, if you will, of the wetland setback onto lots for the full back length of all those lots. It's just certain areas of where the lot becomes tight, particularly in some areas where the applicant has provided at least rudimentary grading plans for the lots. There are some areas that really become quite tight against that setback. And again, during the construction phase, if Mr. Rizberra's company is out there, we have a high level of confidence, but once his crew leaves...
That would be good. That is my concern. It's in those areas that you pointed out. It's not going all the way along. Yeah, right.
And we've got areas where it crosses onto the lot, but it shouldn't be back to the wall. We're not going to clear back in.
That's right.
To me, it's, there's a couple of points that...
I think we're on the same page here. That's where we're...
I think some iron buffer pins would work if you wanted to. I guess we could put a few landscape rocks in. I'm not sure a fence really is the right thing to have.
A landscape rock? I can just see it. Are you a landscape rock? A rock that you can use for landscaping, you know? That's great. That's great. I just know encroachment happens, and if nothing else, you can take somebody out and say, see those rocks, and you're going to get it on your, when you get your lot registered, it'll show that these are not to be touched, so...
And that's something that I do. I make sure that my buyers have a copy of the subdivision plan.
Right, I know.
Not everybody does that, but if they do open the plan, they can, they will see what it is.
But this is all planning board, and you can only plan for the person who's buying that house. And I'm concerned what's going to happen after the house is turned over. So, I don't want to make a big deal about this, but I would personally like to see that changed when we get to the...
So, at this point, staff's drafted a condition that talks about having the plans revised to delineate the wetland setbacks in accordance with staff comments. Now, if the board wants to leave it open for staff and the applicant to work through, you know, is it a stone? Is it split rail fence? Is it... So, I guess that's the question for the board. If you're interested in something specific, let us know now. We'll write that into the condition. If you're more open to allowing staff and the applicant to work through that as a condition, then I think...
Oh, yeah. I don't want to talk about one stone being right and one stone not being right.
Right. So, the way staff intended this condition be framed was that to address the issue and to sort of have the details be ironed out outside of the board's meeting. But again, if the board's more interested in delving deeper, we can do that as well.
Including hardscaping or something, okay?
Yep.
Just to leave the door open for me?
All right.
Okay. That's my only problem. Other than that, we've worked long and hard together and separately, and let's go for it.
Thank you. That was really going to be my only question or point of discussion was whether you were amenable to doing that at those points, so I'm glad to hear that. Beyond that, this has obviously been really well vetted at this point. I'll say again, as I think I said last time, guys were here, I think the site visit, site walk was very helpful, and it's taken a few iterations and meetings, but I think we're ending up with a pretty good outcome. And I think with that, I will put this motion forward. Excuse me. I move to approve the application of Rizberra Brothers Construction Company, Inc. under Chapter 406, the Town of Scarborough subdivision ordinance, for the final subdivision plan for the Theverge subdivision with the following findings, waiver, and conditions. Findings, as stated in the record, I will not burden you with reading those out loud. The one waiver, the board agreed to waive the nitrate plume analysis due to significant distance from any existing wells, and that the subdivision lots are to be served by public water. Conditions, the subdivision shall be constructed in accordance with the subdivision plans titled Second amended subdivision plan of Theverge recording plot, as prepared by St. Clair Associates dated October 31st, 2015, to be revised. The plan sheets are to be revised in accordance with the comments raised by staff and peer reviewers to address, A, stormwater design and technical details, and B, no disturbed wetland setback delineation to include hardscape feature. Revised sheets are to be reviewed and approved by planning staff prior to board signature. That's the motion.
There's actually another spec.
Not the motion, there's more.
I can read this more.
Second condition is prior to the release of the attested final subdivision plan to the applicant for recording at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, the applicant shall, A, pay the required traffic impact fees, B, execute and record all documentation necessary to comply with the town's post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance. Number three, a recreation contribution in the amount of $500 shall be paid on a lot-by-lot basis prior to the issuance of a building permit. And number four, prior to the start of construction, the no disturbed setback area shall be clearly delineated in coordination with town staff.
Mr. Chair, before you call for a second, can I offer a slight adjustment to one of these conditions? And I apologize, I wrote this earlier in the afternoon. As I mentioned, we received a revision to the plan note that is really the only item on the recording plot that we were concerned with. So, condition number one, I would agree that all the first paragraph in A and B remain, and then I'd just say revised sheets to be reviewed and approved prior to release of the recording plat, or prior to the release of the signed plan for recording at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, rather than by signature of the board, because I do believe the plan's array for signature tonight. So, if you're amenable to that and...
Jay, I have a question. Was there an easement that was supposed to be part of this, too?
There will be easements that will be. Typically, those are done as part of the construction package and before the town accepts any infrastructure, so this is going to become a public road. So, yes, there are a host of easements, frankly. So, those will all be addressed.
So, Corey, you want to put that forward as an amendment to the motion?
I don't know that we needed an amendment, because we didn't have a second yet.
Well, you have a second on the main, on the main motion.
I jumped in before Jay jumped in there.
I'll second the main motion.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number seven, Verizon Wireless requests a final site plan review for a transmission tower at 239 Broad Turn Road, Assessor's Map R24, Lot 6. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, as just noted, this is an application for Verizon Wireless. They're seeking to locate a new transmission tower in the RF district, which is also in our transmission tower overlay district. As board members will note, this item was before you previously, I believe it was back in June and August of this year. As part of the review process, the board is really, there's sort of three steps in the review process. One is to go through a priority of location process to ensure that the proposed location of the tower sort of meets the objectives for providing coverage to the town while limiting, essentially trying to limit the number of towers that are required to do that in town. Basically, it appeared during the board's discussion in early August that the board was generally satisfied that the applicant had addressed those criteria. The other two steps are with regards to the performance standards for transmission towers, which are spelled out in that transmission tower overlay district of the zoning ordinance, as well as site plan review ordinance provisions. So, let's see, in essence, so staff has provided some comments in regards to those. Order and Kern has also reviewed the materials and provided a memo. In reviewing what the applicants provide today, really, there seems to be sort of a key issue before the board tonight in terms of considering the height and style of the tower and really providing firm guidance for the applicant and staff and board, town, as this project moves forward. Essentially, the applicant, through their materials, is proposing a 120-foot tower that's really aimed at serving the needs of Verizon while aiming to address the visual impacts and buffering components of the ordinance. However, the co-location justification really appears to be dependent upon future applications and what might be needed there. So, really, in that light, and this is where, again, we really need the board's direction, is understanding that are the needs expressed by the applicant satisfy those performance standards set forth, or does the board feel that there's additional information that could be or should be provided to address what future co-location might look like with the tower? Again, since the board last saw this, they had previously proposed a monopole. There was some discussion at your last meeting about a monopine, monopole. The applicant's now before you with a proposal for a monopine at the board's request. They have looked at the ability to extend a monopine, and they've provided some evidence in that regards. So, that really seems to be the critical issue. Staff does have some other comments with regards to buffering. There had been some discussion about ensuring this development wouldn't impact potential future connectivity or development of the overall lot, and the applicant has provided a concept plan in that regards. So, I guess with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay. And I'll turn it over to the applicant's representative.
Hi, my name's Kelly Bowden. I'm at Vail Dana. My colleague, Scott Anderson, we've met with before, has a conflict this evening. So, Chip and I work closely together, and I was here during the ordinance development stage, so I'm familiar with the process from the beginning and hopefully the end of this one, anyway. So, Jay's comments are correct. I think we're looking for a direction, hopefully, to get to a final approval in terms of which tower you're looking for in this site and at what height. So, I'll let Chip speak to the specifics, and I guess we would look for questions. I think you've been through the concepts several times now, and he has the benefit of having been to all of those meetings, so...
Hi, folks. Chip Fardett here, again, on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Yeah, I think at this point, certainly look to you for guidance and direction on what the board thought it preferred regarding tower type and, of course, height. Again, our application is only for 120 feet. We understand that the ordinance gives the planning board the ability to approve something taller, and certainly we can design the foundation and tower itself, whether it's a monopine or a monopole. Regardless of tower type, it can be designed by us to be extendable to 150 feet. So, we don't show future tenancy on the elevation view of the site plan, mainly because we don't know what height you're looking for. If you were looking for that tower to be extendable from 120 to 150, I would show you on that plan our antenna array at 120 as it's shown today, but then also a shadowed sort of look extended up to 150 with future tenancy going up from there. If the board decided, hey, we really don't want the extension, we'd rather just work with 120 feet and lower, I would present to you an elevation view where, again, we're at 120, and then those future three tenants, carriers, would be down below. Again, 10-foot separation, industry standard, so we're at 120, then 110, 190. I really go back in your court to give us some guidance, and we'll do, again, as you like. Same goes with the fence compound itself. A lot of this stuff is, these are all design parameters by which you typically weigh in on anyhow, so we're happy to oblige.
Thank you. Would you like to take the first crack at this?
We've seen this quite a few times already, and I think, you know, as far as providing you guys with some guidance, my preference is to have a pad that supports 150-foot pole and your construction height be the 120 you need. I would prefer to see any future application or co-location come here and give us the good reason to go and extend it. Also gives us the opportunity to kind of grasp the visual impact of the 120 before we get up to the 150, so, if that ever came to it. That's about it for my comments tonight.
Nick, what were you saying? I'm sorry, do you want the 150 or the 120?
I want the pad to be able to support a 150, but I actually want the pole to be 120.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger?
Thank you. I would agree also with that. It's important that we have the capability of handling the other carriers. Now, when AT&amp;T was before us, they had indicated that Verizon was going to co-locate with them on their tower.
Yeah, Mariner. Mariner's in front of you. Yeah, yeah. Mariner's the tower owner, and AT&amp;T would have been the anchor tenant.
Right. Now, has any, has AT&amp;T or anybody else approached you folks yet?
Not for this.
Okay. Do you, at 120, do you have any sense whether they would be able to co-locate, you know, 10 feet below right now and have any kind of signal?
Below, I don't. I don't. Yeah, I don't want to pretend to know their design, so...
So, if you put that up right away, and almost immediately somebody else comes along and they want to co-locate on that, I mean, has this become a big project to do this, or...
No, in fact, so, let's play it out. We're approved for 120-foot pole that's extendable to 150. Oh, we build it next spring, AT&amp;T, guy comes around, hey, look, this site was built over on the Carter property. We're interested in co-locating on it. The first thing that real estate agent's going to do is going to go back to their engineer and say, well, look, so here are the two options. One, we can go at 110 with the building permit only, or if you do need additional height, you have to go back in front of the planning board with an application. So, it could go either way. My guess is that, you know, that site acquisition agent who's in my shoes is going to be pushing for the 110 feet, you know, it's a lot easier. Yeah, but it'll be up to them to decide at that time, so...
Regarding the monopine versus the monopole, personally, I don't have any preference one or the other. I'm just kind of curious, in the business, in your experience, have you had complaints from, criticism from people when the monopine has been put up? Because I've heard people ridicule it because it looks so out of place.
Yeah, again, site specific, right? So, I've heard both, and it depends on the sighting. You can build 180-foot monopines. Again, I'll use the, I don't know if you recall, but I used the example in Canterbury, New Hampshire. We did a, I was with a different company at the time, but we built 180-foot monopines. And from I-93, it's obviously 180-foot monopines. But from Canterbury, from town, from all those apple orchards and all those horse farms, when you have that amazing westerly view, and you're looking out overnight, AT-93, looking in the westward direction, it just, in some of those vantage points, it just peaks up above, looks like a bull pine. It doesn't stand up as tall as, it's not 180 feet, because you're a completely different location. It's all vantage points, you know, dependent. So, at 150 feet, will this, you know, will it stand out? We've done the photo sims. I don't think it's terrible. I think at 150 feet, if it were me, I would probably pick a monopole and leave it a monopole. At 120 feet, the monopine looks great, so it's...
And Verizon doesn't care one way or the other about which one it is. Performance... Performance standards are the same.
Right. Yeah, from a, from a technical standpoint, yeah, the performance is, is all the same to us.
Okay, all right. I have nothing further.
Thanks, Roger.
Susan?
I agree with both of those assessments. I would definitely think we want to be, have the ability for it to go to a hundred and fifty feet, so it needs to be constructed with all of that in mind.
Yep.
If they want to go lower, I can't imagine it, but it could probably happen. As for the monopine, I'm not sure why you change, but I haven't changed my opinion in that a pole is a pole is a pole, is a telephone tower. We're going to try to keep it within as much of an area and of a height as we can, but, you know, I'm sorry, putting a bunch of greens on it doesn't make it anything but just silly. So, I definitely go for the pole and not the pine.
Less mass.
Yeah, much less mass. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Just to, just to recap, I don't know that I'm totally clear on where Nick and Roger stand on pine versus pole.
I, I personally do not offer an opinion.
Don't have to.
I will say this, I do have a very strong opinion on this. If it's gonna be pine, it better not look like that.
That's a, what is it?
If you have a choice of the leaves, it should look like that.
Charlie Brown, Charlie Brown pole.
That being said, yeah, I don't want Charlie Brown Christmas tree hanging on there. You know, I, I, I mean, I wish we had some sort of straw poll of area residents because, quite frankly, I'm not going to be looking at this as frequently as they would, and I would, I would rather have the people that have to look at it make that decision. Since I cannot, I'm going to rely on the experience of some of my board members here to steer the direction, as long as it does not look like this, whatever that is.
Keep in mind, that photo is taken from inside the compound, looking up the thing, so.
It's terrible.
Yeah, it's terrible.
That's my only opinion on appearance.
Thank you. Roger?
Did you, well, on a.
You're saying that this photograph here is the same as this one here, only looking up?
No, 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 I'm saying that that photo, those are two different sites, right?
Right.
That photo was taken from the actual compound. So, that's a vantage point on private property, whereas the other is a bit, certainly the other tree is a better product, like anything, you know? Is it a Chevy or a Cadillac? I mean, it's, yeah.
The only thing I would say, if they went with the monopine and that thing was to be a hundred and fifty feet, they would always know, the abudders, the abudders would know where they live.
And I, I know I'm kind of putting folks on the spot a little bit, but I think, you know, the applicant's looking for some direction, and so to the extent that we have opinions, I just want to make sure we put them out there.
I am pulling up the, from the applicant's last submission in August, I'm pulling up their pictures of the monopine that they superimposed, I believe, on the site.
Is that the one twenty or the one fifty?
I believe this is at one twenty. So, the balloons we're looking at here, the red balloon is a one fifty balloon, and the yellow is a one twenty balloon.
Right.
And then I believe we're going to see a monopine that's sighted at the one twenty height. So, we don't, I don't believe you superimposed the monopine at one fifty because you were proposing a one twenty.
Right.
So, board members are going to have to use your imagination of what this might look like another thirty feet in height. So, again, here's another view from, this is from near five Carter Brook Drive. You can see the red, the yellow I can sort of pick out here, but again.
That looks great, that's.
So, that's, so that's one twenty from that location. This is from None Such Road. You can see the red circle, that's about all I can see from here as well, and you're seeing what I'm seeing.
Visible, right.
Through some trees from Holmes Road, not a lot there. What do we have here? Hayfield Trail, about eight tenths, nine tenths of a mile away, you can sort of see the balloon, sort of see the arrows pointing, anyway. And this is from Tibbetts Road. So, again, the red is the one fifty, the tree we're seeing is at one twenty. So, I think it starts to get, and this is on the site, so.
Just a quick comment to, to your, your comment, Nick, about, you know, it'd be nice to have a straw poll. Unfortunately, I, I think if we asked the residents, they would just say, we don't want one that we, that we can see from our neighborhood at all. It's the one, we do, we do have an email from a resident, Mr. Mark Eric Amero, who had some concerns, and sort of repeating some concerns that have been articulated before. I know everyone has a copy of this, and I don't want to believe it, but I did want to recognize that, and it is part of what makes this challenging is that it's a, sort of a new thing for us, and I don't know that we're going to get a whole lot of outside help, so we'll have to do our best.
I think unfortunately for Carter Brook, the way that development was created, and you know, basically, it appears to be a lot of clear, you know, clear cutting and just, that was a gravel pit or something like that. So, unfortunately, where this is going to be located, that really, they're the ones who are really going to bear the front of the visual impact, you know? As far as I can see, most other places, it's not going to have much of an impact at all, so.
So, you're saying, just for my, before we go on, it's going to be much clearer from Carter Brook than it will be from Broad Turn Road and the people from, on Broad Turn Road? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you, Jay, if you, if you would, can you go back to the view shot analysis and go to the map at the very front of the package?
Sure.
Yeah, there you go. Um, just one page, another page for me? Good. All right, so, again, recall, folks, this is a drive map that we did when viewing those balloons. All the roads that are highlighted in green.
Trying to zoom in a little bit.
Are roads that we drove, and the balloon is, the balloons were not visible from those locations. Where the balloon was visible, the road is highlighted in red, and you really get to zoom in on X marks the spot to see those sections of roadway where the balloon would be visible, and it's really adjacent to the site. And again, the red dots, different from the red lines, which actually start and stop the viewpoint. If he saw the balloon, he start, he click, you know, he would GPS that section of roadway and stop, and then take a photograph at the most obvious point along that roadway. So, you know, at a hundred and, at a hundred and twenty feet, there's a lot of green and not a lot of red, so.
Yeah, I want to just follow up on what you were saying. We did have a comment from somebody that lives on Carter Brook. There were no comments, you haven't heard any feedback from anybody else besides?
No.
Nobody has said anything?
When the board, I, I just do want to make note that when the board did open it for public comment, there were a couple of abudders who do live along Broad Turn, yes, Broad Turn, that did come and speak to the board.
Right.
So, I just want to be sure that that's noted and remind the board that we have heard other comments.
Do you have this on you? Is this a, I'm sorry, but is this a gravel area or is that at Holmes? So, in Brooklyn, London, there's a contractor, I know that.
Yep, so, so Carter Brook, so that's the end of Carter Brook, that is now open space as part of the Carter Brook subdivision. So, what you're seeing are the lots coming down, the, let's see, some board members may have been on the board when Carter Brook subdivision was extended, originally stopped just about here, if you can see where my mouse is, and then the board approved six or seven new lots with the extension, and then this is the large open space. But, yes, all this area was all a gravel pit, so it's been cleared, largely devoid of trees. Same with the Carter property is also a pit, an active pit. There are some trees, there's a stream or ravine that runs sort of where I'm running the mouse right now on the Carter property where there's trees. There's a significant standard tree, sort of on the Broad Turn and Holmes Road boundaries as well. And those are sort of the, when we were going through the visual, you may remember here, if we come back to this picture from Carter Brook, sorry, I need to zoom out, just give me a moment. So, you'll see these trees, I want to go one more, I believe. So, the trees that are before the monopine, these are the trees that are actually on the Carter property. So, you can see all this clear area is, is on the, is in the open space of the Carter Brook Drive subdivision, and then the property line to the Carter, I know it's getting a little complicated with the same name here, but the Carter excavation pit, the subject property we're talking about, property line is somewhere probably about a third of the way into this field that we're looking at, and then the trees pick up along that ravine I was previously trying to depict with the mouse. Hopefully, that all made sense.
Let's not.
Ravine goes here, until there's some trees around it here.
Okay, and what's in the?
That excavation area.
That's all.
Largely cleared. And let's see if I can find you an aerial photo somewhere.
I just want to make sure there's enough buffering, that's where I'm going with all this in my own mind. I mean, I, I understand that it was quarry of some type that was clear cutted and the subdivision was put in there.
Mr. Mazur, if you'll turn your attention up to the screen again. So, here is the, the red line, this number one is essentially the end of the Carter Brook subdivision road and where those lots are, those, with that extension. This is all part of the open space, and then the property line, I could, I'm certainly off, but is generally in the area I'm running the little mouse. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Generally, the property line's there, so some of this open space is, or cleared area, I should call it, is on the Carter subject property. Then you have these trees, that's, those trees are the, a buffer to a ravine or a stream that runs through there, and then you can see, again, where it clears out, where the, currently, the active excavation work on the Carter subject property where the tower is to be proposed or is proposed, is being worked currently, so hopefully that.
That makes it better. I, my two cents, I, I, I want the, I think the monopine nicely done. I, I mean, I can go either way, to be honest with you, but I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of the average person looking out and doing, want to look at it just a pole. And I, I agree with Susan, a pole is a pole is a pole, but do, do I want to look at a pole, or do I want to look something half decent? And I think I lean in the direction of a nicely done monopine, so that would be my, my two cents. And then there's something else I want to say. I respect, always respect, any comments that we get from the public, and I take things seriously, and I certainly, as you're hearing, don't pretend to be an expert on telecommunications. And I'm trying to learn, there's a lot, like, a lot of other people, and try to give my best input as a member on this board, as other members who work very diligently in coming up with whatever conclusion, good, bad, or indifferent. But anytime anybody throws at me before we've gone through the whole process, either implied or direct lawsuits, I get a tough time with that, and I, I really have a hard time when somebody tries to hold that over, over my head, and knowing how hard this board and myself work to come to the right conclusions. And I just want that for the record, and, and again, I respect every input, whether it's in letter form, email form, or in person, but I don't like any sort of threat, until we've gone through a whole process, and then it's up to whomever to do whatever they want to do. Just needed that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, just one, thanks for that comment, one follow-up question. Did you have a preference on the, on the height? To depict the one twenty versus the one?
I, I, I'm going to go along with Nick, I think the one twenty would be, would be okay.
Thank you. John?
I'm clearly nick of the hundred and fifty foot foundation for a possible one fifty. I'm sure nobody wants to see this come before us again for another thirty feet, but I think a hundred and twenty foot is fine. The monopine looks fine in most circumstances, the one you're showing in Limington, actually looks great from Limington except for one point. I used to live in Standish.
Yep.
You're down twenty-five by steep falls lumber, you look out across the hill, and the only thing that's sticking in the air is that monopine.
Right.
So, there's some particular areas that doesn't look good, but most places it looks fine. And I'm going to agree with Ron and make a comment about, I respect citizens' comments, but we spent a lot of time working on this cell phone issue and ordinance, and for somebody to say there was no public notice, well, you need to look at the town website, because everything is there every week on what's going on, so if you're really concerned with what's happening in this town, then you can look at that. So, for you to tell us that we're not being open is totally wrong, and I'm upset with it. So, look at your town website and see what's going on in town. You could have had a lot of voice in this whole ordinance a year ago, or more than a year ago, in the start. And that said, I'm over.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Gary. The pictures that you provided, can you tell me what that's showing me?
Yeah, yeah, that's a tape drop, as we call it. So, when the contractor's finished building the site, it's part of one of the requirements of constructing a, any power site for that matter, they do what's called a tape drop. They simply verify and photograph for the record the actual top of tower.
I see, okay.
It's a big deal when it comes to federal regulatory, so.
Okay. I think the applicant has done well in meeting our ordinance and has responded to our concerns, so I'm in favor of approving the project. I live, I live across the street from a monopole.
Okay.
But it's really not the monopole that I think most of us have been talking about today. It's, it's literally a pole, and it has, its antennae is in, is inside the pole. So, it's advertised as, as quite a large flagpole, but, you know, it's got a ball on top of it, flag doesn't fly on it.
Yeah.
And when I look at that, you know, over the years, it's sort of, has been, just become a part of landscape, and it doesn't really cause any real hardship for me visually.
Yeah.
But I think it would be different if it had antenna on the outside of it. So, for that reason, if I was living, I do live near Carter Brook, but I don't think I'll see this, but if I, if this was across the street from me, I would rather it be a monopine, as depicted in this kind of a picture here.
Yep.
Because, and, and that brings me to, at a hundred and twenty feet. And that brings me to the next question is, what is the design going to be? I mean, we've had, we have some examples here, and we, I think we can all agree which ones were better than others.
Yeah, yeah, the design, if you, if I had to, if you had to peg one now, probably closest resemble the Limington, Limington photograph in there.
Right, right, but that's from a distance, so.
For thicker, yeah, well, that's actually looking from, no, no, Limington, the photo from Limington is actually the photograph I took from the actual driveway, so you've got a blatant obvious bore site view looking at it, but that gives you the full one hundred and fifty in a complement of the site, and it shows you that we bring the branches down to about thirty or forty feet in elevation, so you could, you could count on that. The branches have started about thirty or forty feet and go all the way to the top, and that thicker greenery, not the, not the lean looking, sorry looking model that we should be looking at earlier, so.
Sorry?
Right, right, yeah.
All right, so.
Can you tell me when I get to the one?
Oh, sorry, yeah, Jay, go ahead.
Keep going. Well, but before you.
Right there, yep, yep, yep.
But before construction begins, is there going to be a process where your design is brought to the attention of the planning department for just a visual confirmation? Yes, that's the, that's the kind of design that the board agreed to?
Well, we can show, we can, as a condition of approval, we can certainly show on the plan. Again, we haven't shown really much of anything, so we're waiting for you, so.
Right.
So, now that we have that, yes, we could say, you know, use that as an example, that design there from the Limington Southwest site, that's a hundred and fifty feet, actually, I believe, and that was built as one fifty to be, just to be one fifty.
Right.
So, yeah, we could do that, or it could be given to the code enforcement officer, whatever you, you know.
Well, whatever pleases the board, but I see, I think Jay's kind of crafting maybe a, an amendment of sorts, or, I don't know, but.
Crafting a.
I, I, I would, I would ask that that, that additional, if you want to call it additional process, be, be employed, calling final approval. Since we don't have, are we here for final approval tonight?
I'm certainly hoping so.
Well, well, the intent of the applicant is to get final approval, so if we do find ourselves voting on it, I would want that additional step taken, that's all. Okay. So, a hundred and twenty feet, monopine, and a hundred and fifty foot base is certainly fine with me. You mentioned something about the fence. Was there debate about the fence?
No, I think there was a bullet point in Jay's memo that talked about us offering to you a black vinyl fence. Really, it's, it's.
Chain link with vinyl inserts?
Uh, it could be vinyl flat, it could be vinyl coated.
I see.
Typically, the design standard seek for the vinyl coated, not the vinyl flat.
Right. Well, I, when I, when I.
Wouldn't you talk aid, you know? Wouldn't you talk aid, you know?
Well, on, on that note, I would recommend a, a black vinyl. Um, when I put a fence around, um, my pool, I used that black vinyl and it certainly does disappear.
Yeah.
It's much better than the galvanized look and I think better than the slats, it lasts longer. So those would be my comments on the design. And I do recall, um, folks that were here a couple meetings ago commenting on this proposal. I know one, I believe, resident of Carter Brook subdivision said if, uh, if this must be constructed, he'd rather it be a mono pine. I just hadn't heard that, uh, anyone remembered that, that opinion, but...
I do remember that. They were, and they were speaking.
So, we can just throw that in the hat, if you will, okay? But thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Uh, so just to recap here briefly, uh, it sounds like we have...
Sure.
One quick...
Go ahead.
So if you go to 120 right now and I notice the mono pines have a kind of a cone shape to them, somebody comes and says, "We need the extra 10 feet." We're gonna, do the limbs get redone so it maintains... Okay.
Uniformity, yeah. And, and, and just so you know, it's not an ex, the way it'll be designed, it'll be designed as a 120 with a 30-foot extension. You don't, you're not gonna do 10 feet at a time. It's not a formidable design. They'll do a 30-foot, single shaft extension for it. So when the next carrier comes in front of you, it's not gonna be, it can't be done incrementally by, in, in tens. So it'll be 120 and then the carrier will come in and say, "Well, we need that extension put on it." It's either an extension or not. That's the way they'll be designed by the manufacturer, so...
So...
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a 150-foot tower, but built only 120 feet?
Correct, correct, with the last section just not, just left off.
And all you do is just take these...
But with the expense of having the branches uniformly shaved, so there's a branch gap in there, yeah. So it doesn't look like a, yeah.
Yeah, we get it.
I think that's, I mean, that's a, that's definitely a valid question and a question I had is sort of how scalable a mono pine would be. Uh, so that's, that's helpful. Um, so I, I think I'm, I'm hearing, uh, it's not necessarily enthusiastic sentiments. There seems to be an overwhelming preference for, um, the mono pine.
Uh-huh.
Um, I, uh, well, I also just want to make a comment about buffering. And I think part of the, part of the, the challenge, if you will, with, um, some of the buffering concerns on, on this site is that we have, that the immediate abutters live in a neighborhood where there's, as was discussed, it's just sort of already clear cut between them and the stand of trees that separates, will separate them from the tower. Um, and that's not, I would argue that's not, um, necessarily the applicant's burden. Um, that's sort of the unique characteristic of, of that site. Um, I will, um, just, uh, draw attention to one of the staff's comments in Section C and buffering about, uh, preserving the significant stands of vegetation on the subject property, which don't directly abut the tower location, but which right now provide some buffering between the, the tower location and those abutters. And I would, um, I would strongly recommend that that be considered. Um, I also hear unanimous support for, for seeing a design that shows 120 feet with the ability to go up to 150 if, if necessary. Um, I am going to recommend that we not take a vote on final approval tonight for two reasons. Number one, we've not yet seen a design. And I think that this is sort of new enough and significant enough that, to me, it, it goes beyond sort of technical loose ends and, um, you know, minor details like what a fence might look like or something like that. We've yet to actually see a, a design. Secondly, um, we've tried to be very deliberate, um, so far as a board in how we've approached these. And I think as, as the chair, that it's, that it's very important for us to make sure that before we entertain a, a vote for final approval, that we sort of have our, our findings in, in good order and that for, for our own purposes and for the record, again, given partially that, the fact that this is, you know, we're, we're just sort of filling our way through, through reviewing projects under this ordinance, make sure we kind of have all of our ducks in a row. Um, and I would suggest that it may be sort of thing which we do on occasion where, where we have, we have it set up as a consent item for the next, uh, meeting in three weeks, where in, in the intervening time, you can provide some design renderings and work through some of the other kind of technical details. And then we, when you come back, we don't necessarily have to sit here and have a whole other long presentation and discussion. But I just think it's important that we, that we really be deliberate and that we give ourselves the opportunity to look at the design and, again, make sure that we, that we have, um, very thorough findings. And, and I'm, I'm speaking partially to the applicant, sort of managing expectations, but also to my fellow board members. Um, if folks feel strongly to the contrary, um, you know, ultimately just want to vote, but that's, that's my position as the, as the chair. And that's the way I would prefer that we proceed.
If I could, um, you're asking for a design. Um, what I'm gonna bring to you is not going to be the actual specific tower design for that location. Uh, it's going to be maybe a sample tower design from another site like Limington, like we said here. Uh, and it's gonna be a revision to that sheet in the plan set showing you what a CAD designer could do in AutoCAD, showing branches starting at 30 feet going to the top tapered in a, in a pine tree fashion. That's really it. I, I can't get a site-specific design until I get approval. And then we go out and do a geotech analysis. We start, actually take the soil samples, send them to the X lab. Lab sends those down to the manufacturer. Manufacturer designs the foundation, 450-foot mono pines, site-specific to that X marks the spot location. Only then can I actually get you a, a site-specific design. So until...
That's understood.
Until now, I can present to you sample, what to do, what not to do, you know, trees. Um, and I could, I could give you a, like I say, I could give you the Limington tower design or something similar to that so that you knew, uh, this wasn't going to be a lean-looking tree, that it was gonna be of the type and style that you've, the board's indicated that they've, that they've appreciated, so... Um, that's the best I can do at this point to meet, uh...
That's understood. And I, I think, understanding the limitations, I, I still think that would be helpful. Um, and I think it would be in the interest of everyone involved to sort of take our time, have one more go-around. Um, you know, I know we, we often see applicants who are understandably anxious to get their approval.
It's been a few years.
And I've, I've been on...
Been here right along with Dan for 30 years now.
I've been on the, and I've been on the other side of the podium myself too, so I understand.
Yeah.
Um, but at the end of the day, um, the grant...
I have a question for the chair.
Sure.
Based on what I just heard and what he just said, and we're not gonna get any interesting specifics because the cock before the horse or vice versa, he's gonna come in and show us something similar to limerick. What's that accomplish? Because in my mind, it doesn't accomplish anything. Because it's not gonna be this specific...
Or at the same point, we're trying to say right now, that we're gonna be in three weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see where, where something's gonna change.
So we can do it as a consent item. I, I don't, I don't want to sit here crafting a, sort of on the fly without having seen that and craft a long motion with findings and all the other language and conditions.
I have no, I have no problem with waiting another three weeks. I have a problem with what is gonna be presented to me in three weeks that's different than now. That's my question.
One thing I would offer is we'll have clarity of record. Right now, we have four, five, six different pictures of different mono pines. And, but for the applicant's sort of discussion here tonight, it's not pinned down. Um, so that's, that's one item. One other item I do want the board to talk and weigh in on, so the applicant knows when they're coming back, to try to make this a clear and efficient potential approval at the next meeting, is this discussion around buffering. Um, I guess I haven't yet heard if the applicant is willing to consider what was in staff comments in terms of preserving that landscaping that's not in the lease area per se, but is part and parcel of their application in terms of the buffering and visual impacts that are depicted in the pictures. It's the, um, and, and just in case the written description wasn't entirely clear, um, I'll come back to the aerial photo and hopefully it's somewhat clear. Sort of the, this tree, these trees, again, this, I think the, the triangle, if I'm not mistaken, is the tower location, lease area.
Correct.
So there's these trees that are along this ravine, that are between the existing works gravel pit of Carter and the Carter, sorry, Carter Brook subdivision, open space. The existing stand of trees along Holmes Road and an extent of trees along Broad Turn. Um, the board took a similar approach with the recent Mariner Tower at, at Fish and Game. And so, again, I haven't yet heard if the applicant's, what the applicant's position on that, that comment is. And, um, depending on what their position is, what the board's response to that is.
Now, I find that a valid point. That I find valid.
Is that within their leased area or not?
It's outside of the, I believe the, there's a 100 by 100 lease area, or maybe it's a 50, I...
100 by 100.
But, um, but it's certainly on the subject property. And it, as I said, it's part of the visual impacts and buffering. The pictures we're looking at, the trees that are doing the buffering...
So it's outside their leased area?
That's my understanding, but that's right. That's right, we lease the postage stamp.
So how are we, as a town, making out their responsibility?
Well, I, I guess that's the question for the board. Are you comfortable that there'll be adequate buffering and visual screening if those trees are removed by the property owner? Because that's, could potentially happen if you don't secure the buffering. So, again, the Mariner Tower is a good example of this. They had a 50 by 50 lease and the board had them preserve trees along one of the property boundaries.
So my, my valid point is, we can say, "Okay, but 100 years from now, the property owner outside this leased area could decide to cut the trees."
We can say that about any buffering requirement, John.
That's not our responsibility, so that's new as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that's, that, I think, as, as the chairs point out, that could be said about any, there's buffers that the board requires to be maintained on any...
It shouldn't be a requirement that they have, so...
That's the question the board needs to...
That's my opinion. It shouldn't be part of their responsibility if it's outside their leased area.
Cory?
Yes?
Um, regarding the, um, that same issue, if Carter, the Carter property were to be developed, putting, uh, doing what Jay wants to, is suggesting, wouldn't that put some, uh, you know, some limitations on what could be developed on that property? You know, the Carter, the Carter property adjacent to where this tower's going?
Well, so there's two Carter properties and let's be sure, are you talking about the subject property? You're talking about the subdivision, the existing subdivision property?
The, the subject property. Because we talked about, I believe at one time, we talked about extending...
Right, and so...
... might, might be extending and come out onto Broad Turn Road.
Yep.
My, my question is, if we put some limitations on, you know, outside of this particular leased area, wouldn't that put some limitations on future development of that Carter property?
Yeah, and I, I'm glad you brought that point up, because that was another comment in staff's, because that was brought up, I believe it was in the, maybe the June meeting, could have been the August meeting, I don't quite recall, about having an understanding of what, um, because ultimately, um, as board members will recall, the, the minimum makers to establish a tower is 25 acres. That can be reduced, uh, down to five acres in the future, uh, provided that there's adequate buffering. And so that was one of the questions that was brought up, and I'm, I'll, I'll find the plan here soon as I stop talking, I can't do both at once, was about developing at least a concept plan that depicts what a five-acre site around the tower might look like, that could accommodate a future development, that could potentially tie into that Carter Brook subdivision extension that this board saw at that time when that was approved. Um, because that right-of-way extends down to this property boundary to potentially allow for that type of interconnection, um, uh, street network that we typically look for. So I'll, I'll pull that plan up in a moment, but that was another comment that staff had that we hadn't heard a response to. And I think speaks to, uh, the chair's notion of waiting and, and hearing what the responses are and be sure we, we understand that in the future. So let me try to find that for you.
Mr. Chair. Thanks. Is it, um, I'm, uh, just throwing out ideas. Is it reasonable to, um, ask the applicant not to remove trees within the... At last, last meeting, I had asked for that, what's the five acres look like? And they provided a diagram of it. It, it, I just wonder if, as a part of condition of approval, they would be willing to accept no removal of trees within that sketch five acres they provided. Um, does that take care of the buffering issue? I mean, is, is that...
I think the one thing, there, if there aren't very many trees within that five-acre area that's being shown, um, again, I think largely the trees that are shown, that are doing the current visual buffering are more...
Outside of it, okay.
Outside, and again, that would be helpful if we could get maybe enhanced rendering of what that looks like. Um, and I'm trying to find the standard that talks about maintaining the trees, the preservation of trees. Just again, so for the board, as you entertain the thought, is, uh, what direction to head?
I just, I just have one comment. I mean, I think the board does need to keep in mind, we don't have a five-acre minimum size of this lot that we're trying to put the tower on. So future, you know, subdivision, future plans would also come before the board or at least be developed that you'd be asked to consider. And we have one concept plan, because I think that was a comment of a board member in terms of what a five-acre parcel might look like. Doesn't have to be that one, it could be a different one, it could be whatever the road, whatever makes sense in the future. So I think asking us to conceptualize every single future parameter is really both impossible and, I think, not required. Um, so I just want to keep that in mind when we're talking about where these buffering limits are. And, um, you know, we obviously want to do the best we can in terms of visual impact, but, um, there's a point where that doesn't become feasible, so...
What is the best you think you can do?
Sean, this is a fant, this is a fantastic sighting. I'd like Jay to go back to that street map if he would. Because we're talking about, let's, 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 let's talk, let's talk buffer. Uh, the trees that, the trees that mainly block the view of the tower, of the proposed tower, are those trees that run Broad Turn and Holmes. Do we agree on that?
Okay.
Okay, so those trees, if I'm not mistaken, probably fall within, and there's, there are significant stand of pines. Uh, they fall within a building setback, if I'm correct? So they couldn't be cut anyhow, correct?
Um, they could be cut if this became a subdivision, those were single-family lots. You can clear your lot.
Well, that road, so from dot number seven back to the intersection where dot number four is roughly located, that could all be wiped out.
There's potential for it.
Okay, okay. And so we're, and so there's, so we're concerned about that stretch of frontage that they own and then we're concerned about the Holmes Road stretch of frontage. And you're also concerned about the folks, seems mostly concerned about the view from Carter Brook Drive. Um, in order to buffer from Carter Brook Drive, because as you folks have, have, have mentioned yourselves, there's such, there's such, there's such little vegetation, I'd have to encumber probably 20 or 30 acres of their land just for that buffer to keep it there today. Um, I can't do that. I think that's unreasonable, but, you know, um, you know, I've got 100 by 100, I got a quarter acre piece of property that we've leased. We can do plantings along all four sides if the board chose, you know, so that if something were cut down, at least it looked presentable. I think the mono pine's a good decision on your part, because you've got greenery behind it and it will blend. Uh, it's not gonna stand out looking like a pole, you know, 100% of the time. So, um, we've got this, we've got this leased lot. There is no subdivision right now. Um, happy to do more plantings, but, uh, to buffer in this location would mean significantly encumbering the Carter property. And you could probably forget about this future subdivision plan that you had, were referring to now. Kind of, it's, this is kind of an interesting dichotomy going on here, right?
Well, I, I...
Preserve, yeah, preserve in both, preserve buffer and preserve their, their phase two. It doesn't, it's not gonna work.
Well, I, just as a counterpoint to that, I think there's a couple of things to keep in mind. Um, one, this area that we're talking about, the Carter Brook folks, there is a ravine in there and so that is protected by a stream protection area. So by and large, any subdivision wouldn't be cutting those trees anyway. So, um, I think, you know, we can go through what the standard talks about, but the board has the ability, if there aren't significant, if the board finds that there can't be significant vegetation saved or it doesn't exist, the board can talk about plantings, as you just talked about. Um, and so the board could then start to get into discussion about what is the right amount of plantings to put on this site. Or the ordinance does go on, say, "The board may require existing vegetation to be preserved." So again, you know, um, you know, I think in large part, talking about maintaining these trees, once you really look into the details about what would be maintained anyway, probably isn't going to encumber much of the lot that would be developed. Um, and then there's, you know, a question... And then there's, you know, a question, you know, I think the question then needs to be asked, what is the appropriate depth along Broad Turn and Holmes? Is it all the existing trees? Or is it some other variables at twenty feet, is it forty feet, is it fifty feet? And I think that's sort of the evidence that probably the board, would help the board in making their determination. It may not be the entirety of what's there. Certainly, actually, I, I do know that, I believe it's Mr. Carter, with his excavation recently went to the Board of Appeals for an expansion of, of his pit and I believe he's, as part of that process, he's required to maintain fifty, fifty foot depth, I believe. And that's when, when he's operating as an excavation site. So he's going to at least maintain those trees. When and if it gets converted to a subdivision, and again, I agree, you can't go through sort of every iteration of what a subdivision might look like, but when it does go through a subdivision process, that fifty foot restriction could potentially go away if there isn't some type of, if the board, you know, at that time, you know, finds that it's okay to clear it, that's one thing. Or if the board, you know, through this process, I think does have the authority to require the, the preservation of it, because this is the subject property. I understand that Verizon's looking at the lease, but.
They really haven't clarified a thing, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah?
This is off their leased property. Maybe we didn't write this ordinance correctly, but we really can't, honestly.
Okay.
Make them preserve something off the property. So if we can't do that, the way this ordinance is written, the way you're explaining at this point, unless this board decides to make a change, so they can't guarantee that those trees will ever be cut down.
Yeah.
So the way you're saying it, so we can't guarantee that those trees, we can't preserve that buffer, then we can't approve the tower. The way you're just saying it to me now, if we can't approve, we can't guarantee that those trees are cut down, we should not approve this tower.
It's, that's, sorry.
If that's the way this is written.
No, that's not the board's, I, I don't mean to say you can't, it's not the board's discretion. I guess what, if it'd be helpful, I could read the, the provision of the ordinance.
Try to push it a little further than needs to be changed, is what I'm trying to say.
I was just trying to point out with the ordinance, and this is a discussion that hadn't even really occurred at this level.
Can I?
And, and I, I guess, just, and, and just a moment, please, I, I, to me, this sort of comes back to feeling like, you know, let's just take a breath and let's have one more.
I agree.
One more cycle to, to sort things out. A little bit more due diligence on it, a little bit more back and forth with staff is appropriate. Let's have clarity of record, I think that's, I think that is important, because at this point, we've sort of been looking at a, at a menu of sample design types. And again, I just think it's important that we be deliberate and I just never like being in a position where we feel that we are, are, where the default is that we have to give approval because the applicant wants to get approval at a certain time. And again, I've been on the other side of that podium, I know it's frustrating at times, but it's not our responsibility to, to make a quicker decision than we're collectively comfortable with. And again, if others are more comfortable, then, then, then go ahead. And I don't mean to be combative, but that's, that's, I think this is, this is well on track, but I don't think we're quite there yet.
Okay. I have no problem with that, but I do go along with what John's saying. Let's just say for the sake of argument, we approve the project and we want to, and we want to maintain, let's say I come in and I buy all that land, just for the sake of argument, I'm going to cut that land down if I want to develop. They don't have control over the, over the fact if I buy that from, as long as I'll meet the ordinance, is, is a outside contractor. So in the deliberations, I want to clarify too, that, that they can't be held responsible outside the range of what they're leasing. We can hold them responsible, certainly, for what, what is within the range of their And so, I have, I'm waiting another three weeks and there are some gray areas here, but, but I think John brings up a, a very important point. How can we dictate to somebody who doesn't own a piece of land? That would be like somebody coming in and telling me how to run my piece of land.
I don't think we're saying necessarily that we're trying to dictate. I think we're saying that if, there's a discussion and some more work that needs to be done on it, whatever the, whatever the, the solution is. At least that's, that's, that's where I am on it and I don't, I don't know how much more we can accomplish going around and around on this right now.
Just one more tiny comment. Part of our findings, we're talking about, thought in the eyes of our chief, our findings under the current conditions, they meet buffering than the ordinance. Does that make sense?
Well, that's the question to the board that I'm not sure I've heard an answer from everyone on.
Well, it's good you brought it up and it's clarified. So in our findings, we point out that, and that's part of our legal process, in our findings, we have to approve under certain conditions. Under the current conditions, we find that buffering is sufficient. We can't put down the run.
Right. And that, I guess, Mr. Pomp, that's what I was trying to point out with the discussion is, so far as what the applicant has showed with their, with their visual simul, their photo simulations, is the trees around it are trees that aren't within the leased area. And I understand, they can't control that leased area, but what the ordinance does talk about is that the board can do one of two things. If you find that there isn't sufficient, potential for sufficient buffering, you can have the applicant plant trees to meet that standard, or the board does have the authority to require, to put an easement on the landscaped area. So, I just, just trying to point out that the board does have options and, and that's what I think staff and the applicant are probably looking for some direction tonight as to, so far, the visual buffering has been these trees that are well outside the leased area. If those go away, is the board still okay with this application? If so, great, that's, that's the board's determination.
I don't think it's contemplating trees that are five acres away because there happens to be a gap in the middle. I, I don't think that's reasonable. I think you're talking about what's inside the leased area and probably just around it and just from a perspective, I, I don't see how that's, you know, strand of tree, I don't know how far away that is, but it's, it's pretty far. It's not adjacent at all to the site, just the way this landscape is. We can certainly propose some additional plantings if, since we're coming back, I mean, are we, Steve, do you guys have site plans, C3?
With this recent packet?
Um, it is in every packet, I think. I think so.
Uh, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from my colleague, Ms. Ogles, she's been waving her hand.
While we're queuing this up, go ahead, Susan.
I don't know why we're doing this. We were supposedly going to be doing a final approval. Obviously, we are not ready to do a final approval. This was presented with way too many questions for us to be able to give final approval, as witnessed by where we are right now, okay? I think that we ought to cut our losses, admit that we don't know what we're doing right now. We don't. Get clear, get some really good information from staff on exactly what our options are. If necessary, have a workshop about it. I don't care, but this is not the place to be doing this, okay? I would like to recommend that we, that, I, I would like to second the chair's idea that we not try to do a final approval tonight. Have another meeting and have it very cut and very dry and very clear as to exactly what we're going to do. We are not going to reinvent the wheel, we're not going to make a whole presentation again, we're not going to look at a whole bunch of things on the, on the, we're just going to do this, this and this, okay?
I, I agree with you. I think some of the discussion we've had has been, although it's been a little, somewhat difficult, it's been helpful to a point, but at, at the onset of a certain point, it just starts to turn into a design charrette and that's not what we're here for.
A motion to table it.
But we need some direction.
Yeah, what are we doing next?
Mr. Chairman?
No.
Yeah, I'm in favor of, of hearing, hearing the applicant come back in three weeks, but I think what we need to give the applicant tonight is very clear direction, so when they do return, they can hit the bullets and we can say yea or nay. I was hoping to provide final approval tonight and part of me still would like to do that, but I get a sense that my colleagues aren't that comfortable and I understand that in the old days, we used to craft these motions on the fly. That's not to say that, that that was a good way of doing business, but I do appreciate having time to be able to sit and digest and this is, and this, this cell tower ordinance is.
We know it's new.
It's new.
In the application.
So I appreciate the chairman's energy behind being extra careful and, and I'm not hearing for more weeks is going to create any huge hardship, but I would.
No, but we just need to understand the universe of where we are and what it is that are those final bullet points, because right now, I don't know that I know what those are.
Okay, fair enough. So, if I can continue, I'll give you my bullets.
Okay.
We have a hundred and twenty foot monopine, we have a hundred by hundred leased area, a fifty by fifty fenced area within that hundred by hundred. I would, I would like that it be vinyl, black vinyl coated fence. I've heard that we want a hundred and, a pad that supports a hundred and fifty foot and I would like buffering, certainly, you don't need to, only, only clear that which is absolutely necessary for the infrastructure. So it appears that there would be opportunity to retain natural buffering within that hundred by hundred, outside that fifty by fifty.
Yeah.
And I, I think, and a, a design of the monopine that you propose to construct. To me, I would be satisfied with, with those things at the next meeting.
I think as far as I'm concerned, you've articulated it well and, does anyone else have anything to add?
I agree.
Captures it pretty well. So, thanks for bearing with us.
Okay.
And we'll see you in a few weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's talk about our restaurant now. Item number eight, BBS Enterprises requests site plan review for sixty-two Muzzy Road Asian Fusion Restaurant, Assessor's Map R37, Lot 38. Jay?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see. My notes here. As you just noted, this is an application, actually for a mixed use development at sixty-two Muzzy Road. It's been before the board, at least two other times, began with a sketch plan and back in the winter and we saw it at least once this summer. Board members will recall what the applicant is principally seeking to do is to construct a, a new restaurant space of just under five thousand square feet, which is within the, just under the limit, size limit for restaurants in the TVC three. Applicant's also seeking to repurpose the two existing buildings on site. The existing farmhouse will be an office space of roughly fifteen hundred square feet or so. And then there's also a, an existing barn that the applicant is proposing to repurpose. And again, we talked about the use of that barn at the last meeting, how there was going to be some coolers associated with the restaurant as part of that five thousand square foot area, but that the principal use will be considered an accessory use. By and large, the applicant maintaining that existing building. Let's see, we received comments from staff, Woodard and Kern and Goral Palmer, and a couple of the issues that are highlighted have to do with site access. Board members will recall the applicant seeking requests for driveway separations. At the last meeting, we had requested that their traffic engineer provide a, opinion on the matter and he has done that, which is reviewed by Goral Palmer and generally agreed with the findings of the applicant's town engineer. Board members will also note that the last meeting, snow storage was discussed quite a bit and there still seems to be some issues to be resolved in that regards moving forward. Let's see, as I go through my comments, we questioned the location of the bike wreck. I know the applicant has had a discussion with our town engineer with regards to connecting to the existing storm drain in Muzzy Road and those issues have been largely worked out. And again, depending on how the board feels on this item, we have prepared a motion with some conditions that address a lot of these items. Lighting, their buzzing and photometrics plan provided, and there's some question about the outdoor lighting along the patio. I guess the other, two other items that we want to touch on, be sure we talk about are with regards to HVAC systems or any hoods that might be related with venting for the kitchen. Given some recent experiences, we know this is, it can be a critical component to development and how it fits into a site. The applicant has depicted a HVAC pad, but has indicated that their HVAC systems haven't been formalized yet. So I think we want to be sure that the pad is properly sized in the proper location. We understand what those impacts will be. And then finally, we did talk when it was before, there was, let's see, we have the, in terms of architectural design, I think the board was largely comfortable with the applicant had proposed previously. They did address, there was a question about some of the stonework and they have addressed that. So, again, as I said, staff, in reviewing the comments, we have prepared a motion, should the board be so inclined this evening? And with that, turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jay, and I'll turn over to Mr. Allen.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Lee Allen, Northeast Civil Solutions, joined tonight by Mike Richman from Custom Concepts and Jamie Lang from the, the restaurant. As Jay had mentioned, we've done a bit of work since the last time we were here. Since then, we have received all the DEP approvals, those were forwarded to the town. Snow removal, we don't have a ton of room on our site for snow removal, that was something that was discussed last time. We've put together a note that's on the plan that states that we are going to take advantage of the, the snow storage that we do have on site when it's full, that snow's going to have to be removed from the site, similar to a bunch of other properties up and down Route one. It's just kind of the nature of the beast when you have a, a very full site, similar to ours. Pursuant to that, we received a letter, and I believe you folks may have have a copy of it from the butter next door at the Creative Imaging, with some concerns about us and snow storage along the parking area and not infringing on their property. They had requested that we put in a vinyl fence along the entire length of the property. We looked at that and while we agree that there is some fencing that should be put up, we don't agree that it should go all the way to the front. We think it wouldn't look as attractive as if it was in a spot that would actually do some good. What we're proposing, vinyl fence from roughly this area, right here, back here, represented on this scene, I kind of find it, it's kind of hard to see, but it's from here to here. And that's mostly to protect the plantings that they have, they have some very nice looking trees along the edge of their property, so we are proposing to put that fence in as they propose, but not all the way. They proposed it all the way to the front. We thought it would block sight lines in both directions, as well as just thought it's been very aesthetically pleasing. And to the back, there's not much back there, really, we can get in trouble with or hurt, there's plenty of room and the owners are going to, they're not going to subcontract snow removal, they're going to do the snow removal on themselves, they understand the issues with the neighbor and they're going to take care when they remove snow. But that's where we are, those issues. Lighting, one of the comments had to do with outdoor lighting. Outdoor lighting that we're envisioning is probably some string lighting attached to some, some overhead beams and stuff, kind of oriental looking for the Asian, kind of get the Asian restaurant feel. Those are going to be treated with probably string lights, a very low level lighting. We've got an email from the lighting designer stating that that type of low level lighting will not create any light trespass. It's so low, it wouldn't even register in their photometric model. So, that being said, that's what we're planning for the outdoor seating area. And again, it's, it's probably going to be only open in the seasonal warm weather months, we're guessing May until, you know, late September, early October. As Jay mentioned, we've worked with the public works director and town engineer to put a drainage system together and previously we were talking about hell metting in addition before the culvert, but the stream process are here. We're now proposing a system tied into a drain line that runs down, tied into that same culvert. We met with them on site, we, we talked through all the issues and I believe we have the notes and, and so forth to be able We talked through all the issues, and I believe we have the notes and so forth to be able to construct that in a manner that it would be satisfactory to the town. And one last thing is bike rack. We previously put it in the back, more thinking it was going to be used for employees, but Jay brought up a good point, that all this office use proposed to this front building, so we're going to move that bike rack that brought me to that walkway. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike. He's going to talk about HVAC.
Good evening, Mike Richman, Custom Concepts. Specifically, address staff comment L, sort of two components to it. The HVAC system at this point has not been designed. However, I've specifically designed the building for the following. The air handlers themselves, the large units, would be within the structure itself in various portions of the attic space. The condensers or compressors that are necessary outside to produce the air conditioning liquid would be outside, ground mounted, and easily buffered, as Lee has depicted it. The other piece is the, sort of the exterior elements necessary for the cooking appliances. And I actually just met with Jim Butler this afternoon. We discussed this. The applicant is sort of weighing out different options with various type of cooking appliances that will be at tables and various equipment in the kitchen. Pretty much all of them, though, would require, you know, the hoods and exhaust systems. The fortunate thing is that no matter how these play out, they'll be coming through, they would be coming through the rear portion of this section of the roof, and therefore barely visible when driving by Mussy Road. This structure is much taller, the farmhouse is much taller, and they could be integrated well into the backside. So the area that is, has been depicted as having a few skylights in a previous rendition would have those hoods coming out the back. But again, barely visible at all, especially from the road. The area for the kitchen, which of course will have a larger hood system, would be coming out this back area, which is purely utilitarian. And the only way you'd be able to see that is if you are literally in the back looking at it, or maybe from a select area of the rear parking lot. But driving by here, and I just did this again this evening on my way here to double check, barely visible at all, because this roof is so low and this building is higher, and there's a lot of large vegetation. Is that it?
Turn it over to you. All right. Thank you. Who wants to start on this one? You want to have-
I'll start.
Questions or comments, Roger?
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, but the previous chair taught me a lot about HVAC. And you're saying barely visible, but can it, can they be enclosed anyway, even though it's only going to be barely visible?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of code issues on that with the NFPA regulations. You mean enclosed as in making it look like a chimney or within a structure?
What have we done in the past, Jay, to keep them out of sight?
Uh, let's see, the boards try to host it different ways of approaching it, and I guess it would be upon the applicant to demonstrate to the board that it's not going to have a, what the board would consider an adverse visual impact. So, you know, I'm not in any position to provide an answer to the question, having not seen any details.
But there are ways that they can be kept out of sight as a general comment, is that not true?
It would seem, and I'm sure-
I mean, we've had other structures that we've had built, that we put stipulations on so that they weren't visible.
Correct.
And that's all I'm saying, that this be follow that same line of thinking.
Understood. There are some tricks that we can do for that. We can create curbs and some ways to hide that.
I mean, based on previous experience, every time we've requested that, they've come up very well. I mean, so there is precedent to that. What else was there? Oh, something, you hit the lighting. Have we hit landscaping? I know we talked about snow removal, but what about landscaping?
So this is the landscaping plan that you presented. A few of the trees, by putting up a fence, some of the alterations we'd like to make in the plan are- Remove, remove these three trees right in here. Take this tree, kind of scoot it out of the way, so we have some room to store snow in this area right along here. So really, it's just the removal of those three trees to provide some more snow storage. I think the questions came about, it seems like there's a lot of trees that may be blocking snow removal, or you're going to kill them while you're doing the removal. So it's more of understanding the issues of the snow storage issue, knowing that we have limited space, and trying to make the space that we do have usable.
Susan, what do you think?
I, I'm married to an HVAC engineer, and they can do anything. Absolutely, I'm not concerned about it. They'll take care of it. You know that we care, and they will care that we care.
I think that was the spirit of the comment.
Yep.
Actually, that it just be thought about.
Yeah, that's it. You know, we care, so.
And one of the other, no, I knew. The other issue is signage. Staff would give final approval to that, you'd have to pass by staff as a condition?
At this point, that's what we have, we don't have any designs. If that was what we prefer to do, we're proposing to have a sign in the front. But if the board is amenable, we'd like to work with staff on that, because we just, we haven't got to that point yet in the design.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. John?
Susan, take your hot medicine. Talking about snow removal and snow storage, the northwest part of this site, what is behind that? The corner to the-
Right here?
It's all trees, right?
It is.
It's all wooded?
It is all wooded, yes.
So, Susan, don't be mad at me.
Wah, wah, wah.
You could take some of those landscape trees out of there and put some snow storage in there. Take those trees, put them towards the front of the property. It's just a kind of a waste to put them back there when they're already wooded to begin with.
I agree. And this latest concept, if you recall the last one, there was only a few trees here. We've actually added some trees here.
So I'm saying, some of the trees up there, I mean, keep the same budget and move them somewhere else. They're looking at woods to begin with. It doesn't make any sense for you guys to put some more trees in there that, whether you're talking dogwoods basically, some smaller trees, just move them. Or eliminate them, period. That northwest corner, even the, towards the west side, that's still-
Trees. Correct.
That's the only comment I have.
Yes.
Mike?
Thank you. Nice plan, well done. It is very tight. I'm not, I'm not, if I'm sensing you, I think are like me, not too excited about a vinyl fence at all, let alone even the distance that you talked about. I'm thinking that if you're plowing snow, that vinyl fence is going to last half a season. I understand, you know, the issue with protecting the neighbor's vegetation. I think it's more important that a split rail fence would at least announce where that boundary is, and would bring attention to those who are plowing snow to keep the snow on their own property. And if there's issues, this procedure, we can go from there. But I don't like the idea of a vinyl fence, just because I don't think it's going to look good in year two.
And I know driving up Broad Turn Road, there's a vinyl fence near Hidden Creek that every time a snowfall goes by, it blows out.
Exactly.
And I would agree, this is more of a reaction to the butter's concerns than us trying to be the good neighbor to the butters.
I know, yes. Yeah, yes, sure. And I'm sure he or she appreciates that as much as I do, but I don't think that's a solution. Seems like the challenge is going to be just, is taking the snow from the front of the site and moving it to the back.
Agreed.
Because it appears that, like John pointed out, you have ample opportunities to store it back there.
Yes.
So maybe a part of the condition, forgive me, maybe there should be a plan. Is there, is there a, at least a, some sort of plan as to how snow will be managed on the site?
It just, we identify snow storage areas and say, when they become full, then the snow must be removed. And that's the note that we've added to the plan.
And it might, it might need to go just a little further. I know we're looking for final tonight, but it might just describe that, you know, insofar as it's practical, the snow accumulate on the front of the site should be moved to the rear of the site for storage. I know you have a couple of snow storage areas in the front, but that conflicts frankly with your comment about the fence, because I think that can limit site distances in and out of the property also, if that's left unmanaged. So I wouldn't be in favor really of using the front of the sites to store snow, because anything like last year can easily be eight feet high.
I was going to talk about last year.
Right. But it's good looking, good looking site. I think you've done a great job with it. I love the renditions. We haven't talked about colors and roofs, but I, I'm sure that it's going to meet our design guidelines, and certainly the pictures would indicate so. As far as hiding the vents, you know, we've seen fencing put on roofs and things of that nature, and it doesn't appear like you'll need much. So like Sue says and others, I'm sure you'll be able to meet that challenge. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman, but I'm in favor of approval of this project. Again, I think the only thing lacking might be just a little bit more detail as to how snow is going to be managed to the satisfaction of not only this board, but, you know, the concerned neighbor. There are legitimate concerns. I don't think that fence is, I think a fence may be an answer, at least partly an answer to announce where the line is. Because I know when you're plowing snow, you see a split rail fence, I mean, you're constantly going to be reminded that I got to stay on one side over the other, you know, but I don't think the vinyl's going to do it. Thank you.
Susan?
Um, I agree that vinyl isn't going to do it. I was reviewing the proposed draft motion that we, that staff presented to us, and one of the items there is prior to the issuance of a permit, of a building permit, the snow storage plan shall be revised to address the deficiencies and so on. So it's being recommended that as part of the approval, that an actual storage plan needs to be written up, and I want to, excuse me.
Thank you, Susan. That's perfect, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that takes care of my concern on that idea. And also, the number four, prior to issuance, final plans for the HVAC and kitchen hood should be reviewed by the planning department. These things that we're mentioning, you know, are all, I think, the signage, I would just like to suggest that because I think signage is one of those things that's very personal, and we have a really important attitude towards it, describing that it might include the chair as well as the staff. Staff might make sure the chair reviews it as well. Was there anything else? No, I'm very excited that you're coming. I can't wait. I have a couple of quick questions, which I don't really expect answers to right now, mostly curiosity. I do love a good landscape plan, and it doesn't bother me in the least that we take those trees out of the back and make snow storage for it. So there. Under trees, it's got four different, one, two, three, four different ways of saying heritage river birch, and they're all different sizes, and I don't know why we would want one size over another size. It's just very confusing to me, but I don't want us to take up time for it. Just notice that I do, I do look at these things. I also want to just say that I think that some of the things that you've added that are like garden are going to require a certain amount of maintenance. So just make sure that maintenance plan is part of this. Other than that, I don't have any questions or problems. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Roger?
Thank you. The only comment I would say is regarding the sign, where your neighbor is going to be, is obviously very sensitive to the location of the driveway, the entrance. I think you might want to consider moving the sign closer to the front of the building, because I can envision people coming down there and then all of a sudden seeing the sign and pulling it to the wrong driveway, and that would just end up irritating your neighbor, so. I think you've, you've talked enough about the snow removal. So I don't, oh, I just had one of, we talked, I think you talked about outdoor seating.
Yes.
That's going to be on those pavers, I assume, right? On the left side of the building?
This area right here.
Okay. And that's where it's going to be the timbers or something?
Okay, fine. I think I'm all set.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you. Roger kindly took my one and only point, which was-
I wrote it down.
You did, didn't you? You cheated. Which is I would ask staff to just evaluate the sign location when you're going over the signage, just because those driveways are close together. Perhaps it belongs on the other side, but I'll let you guys sort that out. And then I will, I will now copy Susan and say I am excited as well. So good luck to you as well.
Thank you. I think all the grounds have been covered pretty well. I think you've done a great job with a kind of a tricky site, and been very responsive throughout. And I think we've got, you know, we do have a draft motion here, the conditions of which I think are addressed pretty thoroughly, some of the things that have been mentioned here around snow storage and those sorts of things. So rather than belabor things, I will make a motion. I move to approve the application of BBS Enterprises, Inc., represented by NCS, under Chapter 405 zoning ordinance and Chapter 405B site plan review ordinance with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings as stated in the record. There's one waiver. Based on the site characteristics and the evidence provided by the applicant's traffic engineer, the board waives the driveway separation standard for the proposed access drive in relation to Honan Road and to the driveway for sixty-four Mussy Road. Conditions, number one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall A, pay traffic impact fees; B, execute and record the maintenance agreement required by the post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance; C, finalize the ten-foot easement for the public sidewalk along Mussy Road; D, provide revised plans to address comments and planning staff's comments related to Plan Note Nine, Bike Rack Location and Lighting; E, provide detail of fencing discussed during board deliberation. We're not stipulating any specific type. Two, prior to connecting the onsite system to the existing public stormwater system in Mussy Road, the public system shall be flushed and cleaned. Notification shall be made to the town engineer and public works director at the time of installation of the D H M two in order for the town to inspect the connection. Three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the snow storage plan shall be revised to address the deficiencies identified in staff comments. Final snow storage and/or removal plans may be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Four, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the final plans for all HVAC systems and kitchen hood vents shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Five, prior to the issuance of signage permit, the final sign design and location shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Six, a pre-construction meeting is required before the start of construction. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and its contractor, and utility company representatives, if applicable. A pre-construction meeting may be scheduled in coordination with a senior planner. That's the motion. Any discussion?
I wrote down a note to talk about the sign, but I'll just add that my preference, especially in that kind of area, and I agree with the location suggested by my colleagues, is that it be a lower type monument type sign as opposed to a pole mounted. That's all I would add.
I agree with that. Any other discussion?
No, that's just a comment.
Comment, yeah. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck, and look forward to it.
Thank you.
Item number nine. Bell Family requests preliminary subdivision review for a four lot conservation subdivision titled Bell Family Subdivision, Assessors Map R thirty, Lot six. Jay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members will recall, we saw this at our last meeting. Board members will recall, we saw this at our last meeting. The applicant has responded to staff comments, and at this point, we think the preliminary plans are in pretty good shape. You'll notice that at this point, there were some questions about the net residential calculation that we worked through with the board, and the board was satisfied with the direction that was headed. Lot C has been revised, and the zoning administrator now finds that it meets the frontage requirements. Really, the only couple of things left are there's some final subdivision notes that need to be put on the final plan that the board will ultimately sign. Town engineer has a few comments in terms of stormwater design, but again, items that we believe can readily be handled between a preliminary and final approval. So, at this point, staff has prepared a motion for the board to consider. It being preliminary, it's a pretty baseline approval, we'll get into more specifics when we get to the final, but staff really has no further comment on this application at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, I was just going to say, other than just showing you that the change we made, Lot C to Lot B, we stretched the frontage a little bit more, building area, we tried to go away from B and then we angled it back. From the last time we met, really, it's the only change, other than dotting some i's and crossing some t's, and turn it back to you if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything else on this?
Thanks. Yeah, I missed the last meeting, so forgive me, but it looks like a pretty, pretty simple layout. I understand that the board commented on above-ground utilities to access?
Correct. So, here, I believe that in the ordinance, it states that all utilities should be underground, but we're not building infrastructure, not building underground, and that road is currently served by overhead utilities, it just kind of makes sense.
Yeah, it makes, makes good sense here. I'm curious, from Lot D, it doesn't have a, an owner's name, but is that occupied, that lot?
The house is currently unoccupied, but it was owned by the, the parents.
Oh, okay, all right.
They passed away that house, I think it may be rented.
Okay.
But it's owned by the, the Bell family.
I see, okay. Very good, and it looks like there's good separation with driveways, I know West Beach Ridge can be maybe problematic sometimes getting out, I think as we move forward, might be a good idea to see how folks can turn their vehicle around and, and approach West Beach Ridge head-on as opposed to backing out.
Yes, yes.
But other than that, not much to say. Nice to see Bruce on, see something coming from him, I know he's been a fine gentleman and advocate for all things that are good in this town for many years, so, I wish you best of luck and look forward to the next reiteration. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Appreciate the responsiveness on the, on Lot C, and nothing really more to add at this point, so I will move to a preliminary subdivision plan titled Bell Family Subdivision, with the condition that the applicant address planning and engineer staff comments prior to final approval.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Was that discussion, or were you...
Sorry, we're ready to go to him.
All right, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Main Family Eye Care requests a site plan review for 370 U.S. Route 1, assessor's map U39, Lot 44. Jay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, as you just noted, this is a application to repurpose the existing building at 370 U.S. Route 1, currently home of Cliff's Antiques. The property is in the B3 zone, and it is also encumbered by, portion of it anyway, by a stream protection overlay area. The site was before the board back in July for a sketch plan review, and they've now basically provided the final details we need to begin our formal site plan review. As I, let's see, we will have received comments from planning staff, Woodern Curran, Gorle Palmer, our traffic peer review engineer, as well as Angela Blanchett, our town engineer. Obviously, there's sort of a host of comments, but, you know, sort of on a high level, the principal area of interest in terms of site elements has to do with site access and internal vehicular circulation. Once we got looking at the details, given the current design, there were some concerns that were raised about the performance of the proposed drive aisles, and particularly parking spaces on the northerly side in terms of accessibility and drive aisle width. Staff and our peer reviewers have a sort of a host of comments that aim to see if there's opportunities to potentially look at a redesign that might accommodate some of the zoning site plan standards that seek to reduce curb cuts and reduce the number of turning movements that would need to be made on Route 1, particularly anyone who would park at that northerly parking lot right now, their only access to Route 1 would be to go northerly on Route 1, and if they wanted to do a south movement, they would have to travel up Route 1, find a place to turn around, and then get back onto Route 1 to head southbound. So, we have some comments and maybe some ideas that the applicants had opportunity to look at, to maybe consider ways of eliminating the need for that movement. Some other issues that were addressed, the applicant has identified some snow storage areas that were within the 25-foot stream setback, we'd like to see that removed in effort to try to preserve and buffer that stream as best as we can, so that salt and sand don't get moved into there. As I already mentioned, Woodern Curran has some comments with regards to stormwater. As I, as I mentioned with the last applicant, or the restaurant, I suppose, in terms of HVAC systems, has the applicant sort of considered what's existing on the building, is that adequate, are there other elements that we need, need to be added, and have those been adequately considered? And then I just want to mention that, and I know this was an issue that came up during sketch plan review, so the applicant is proposing to repurpose the existing building, and so our design standards actually have a, a chapter, a page or so about, design standards dedicated to sort of the renovation of existing structures, so we turn the board's attention to those and, and consideration to that. With that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you for, for discussion.
And I will hand it off to the applicant.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Downing from Garland Turgeon Architects. I've been working with Main Family Eye Care and VED Engineering to help bring you this project. As Jay mentioned, we are proposing to renovate the existing structure to a 3,700-square-foot office space for Main Family Eye Care and an adjacent 1,700-square-foot future tenant At our previous meeting during sketch plan, there were some concerns about the materials and the forms of our renovated elevations, and we've gone ahead and made changes, significant changes to those elevations. Primarily, the form has stayed intact, two parapet walls on the elevation to Route 1, floor-to-ceiling glass at those either end. The parapets did shrink from our previous iteration, and the thing that really changed was the materials. We have three different materials now, breaking up the facade, vinyl clappards, vinyl sheaves, and then stones veneer fade. They are vinyl, it's not typically, you know, they're not wood shakes or wood clappards, but we think that durability-wise and economically, it's a much better choice. Landscape has been designed to evoke a coastal Maine character, much of the plant material is similar to many plantings you see in commercial and beachfront properties around the, around the town. All designed to have low impact, low maintenance, nearly all the plant material is either native, drought tolerant, and/or recommended by you guys and your design standards. The proposed landscape, as drawn and as reviewed in the packets that you've been provided, does reduce the non-vegetated area from 12,000 square feet to 10,900. As Jay mentioned, we don't show any pads for HVAC equipment onsite, we do plan to have HVAC units mounted on the roof towards the back of the building, that combined with the parapets at the front, we anticipate that they will be well-screened. With regards to the recommended, or some of the comments regarding the layout, site circulation, internal drive, those are kind of tied into snow storage as well, so I'm just going to kind of tackle both of those together. In reviewing or receiving your comments, we agree that we like your kind of recommended layout. I would just add, or say that one reason that we didn't initially do it the way you're somewhat recommending is that it somewhat flies in the face of a couple of your other recommended guidelines. So, it really was which guidelines do we start following? So, I can assure you, we're trying to do the right thing. But, that being said, I'm not sure if it's visible, but I did overlay a quick sketch as to how a more typical lot might look if it was placed over here with no curb cut. The real problem, from my perspective, or maybe from yours too, is this front drive, it approaches on several things. Most noticeably, you're a Route 1 green space, and for two-way traffic there, at a minimum, you're going to need to have at least 18 feet. That combined with what you, what your guidelines recommend that for five feet being away from the building, you're already 23 feet away from the building, almost off the property, let alone setbacks. That being said, the site works much better this way, we would like it this way. There's much more room for snow storage, and it's not in the 25-foot setback. We do lose a parking space this way. You only have one curb cut, and again, it kind of, it will force us to relocate our sign. Other than that, we do like your proposed layout, and we propose, or we will likely lean towards something like that for our final application. I guess with that, I will turn it over to Jason Vafiades from VED Engineering, and he will talk a little bit about some of the stormwater and utilities.
Jason Vafiades, Vafiades Engineering Design, which I'm actually slash FST at this point now, too, so, kind of moving spaces as it is. Really, I'd like to talk about stormwater, there were a couple of comments that us egghead engineer types kind of squabble over. The, it's important to me, this site is located, the parts of Route 1, and the whole site now it is, is the gravel area with a building, sort of drained overland. There's a stream actually back here that's fed by quite the hardy, I think it's like a five-foot concrete round culvert. And currently, what happens is the water just kind of goes over the bank and into the stream, and that's typically, it's not really something that I want to continue doing for this site, and even though that we're reducing impervious area, I'm actually trying to put the water in the ground before it washes over the top of the bank anymore. And the way we're doing that is we're going to use these new pave drain systems, which are pervious pavers. And we're going to shed the water on two sides this way, and then depending on what the layout is. We're still going to come down this way, and pending, I'm going to get a couple of, I've actually gone on here, this whole site is a fill site, the actual in-situ soils are about, I think about four or five feet deep from the existing gravel layer, what they just kept bringing in fill on this site. It's all pretty good gravel, but we're going to do a couple test fits, just so I know how deep that gravel goes, if I need to under-drain the, the pavers, which we'll have done for the next time. But, I just wanted to know that we were sensitive to the, sort of the natural resource that we got back here, and we are going to try to fix it up so we don't have any sort of ongoing drainage and erosion issues that are at the back. As far as utilities, we are going to bring in a new gas line that isn't on your plan, but will be on the next plan. And pending the, the location, not the location, the size and the condition of the services, we will probably bring in a couple of new services for water as well, which, in which case we'll bore under Route 1 to make any new connections. And that is it for utilities. If anyone has any questions for me or Kevin.
Does your team have anything else for, for the question?
If I may, just for a brief moment, just to...
Sure.
Provide a little bit of context for the board, because as the applicant indicated, obviously, we all know this site, or presumably, we know this site, it's a developed site, but is heavily constrained, as we can all see by the stream that runs along the back of it, the existing conditions of the site, and, and staff comments certainly recognize that the applicant was trying to be sensitive to that 15-foot Route 1, so, I guess what I, they were trying to be sensitive to that 15-foot streetscape buffer along Route 1, but this site represents a host of characteristics that we won't see on many sites, and so I think, you know, as the board goes through its discussion, we're going to run afoul of something. And so, the question is, what do we run afoul of? Curb cuts. Is it the allowing for a drive aisle within that streetscape? Is it trying, you know, development closer to the stream? All these things the board, to an extent, can allow for, so, you know, I want the board, as you're thinking through the proposal, sort of help, help the applicant understand what should be the master, so to speak, because the board does have that deference to work around design, certain design characteristics. So, I just wanted to sort of put that out there, that we are going to run afoul somewhere, and we need to sort of understand what is it that's going to be the guiding force going forward.
Right, it's a good valid point, it's a repurposed site, and in some ways, it's almost similar to, we have an existing non-conforming use, and we, we have a little bit more leeway as long as we feel as a board that we're, that we're making things better overall and we're kind of prioritizing, so, thanks for making that point. Before we go to full board discussion, we do have the opportunity for public comments. If there is anyone who'd like to come on up and introduce themselves, any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll just go right to the board, and Susan, would you like to go?
My grandmother would be so excited. She was the oldest living resident in Skyrow for many years, and every time she went by that building, she'd shake her head and she'd say, "Such a shame, such a shame." So, anything being done to this building is exciting to me, but it is a host, it's like a hornet's nest trying to figure out which way do we go in, you know? My concerns, my, you know, we're all going to have our own little concerns. My concern is number one, the stream. I had said at the last meeting we had, I drove down there, parked my car, and got out and walked to the very edge. It doesn't really look like it there, but it does, it drops right precipitously down into what is not a dry stream, that's a wet stream. There's quite a bit of water that goes through there.
That's true, yeah.
And, you know, it actually is more than a stream to me, because, you know, you've got a brook, you've got a stream, and then you've got a big stream, this is a big stream. I'm very grateful for what it was you said, because I'm feeling better already that it's going to be looked at very closely. You'd never be able to build that building today, no way. So, if you're going to use a building that is really not in any way conforming, we're going to have to work with you, but, you know, you have to work with us, too. The other thing has to be, by the way, I have no problem with the one-way exit, I think this is a much better suggested layout. I think this is a much better suggested layout for the site. I think we're on to something in terms of making the site work better. The devil is going to be in the details for this, and I'm going to go on record as saying that I think that the architecture needs to be looked at yet again. If nothing else, I think we can make gestures to really make that building look like it belongs in Scarborough, and to me, that doesn't. And if you, and I was thinking the other day, and I checked with Jay just to make sure that this was something that we could actually do. Is there some confusion as to what, remember earlier, we were talking about, oh, what's that word? Oh, we did it with, it's all in how you look at it. Okay? So you look at our guidelines, our design guidelines, our design standards, and then you try to apply them. And there is many ways of doing it, of course, if there are architects, whatever. But this is not, what you're presenting, if you pull it out again, the architectural... It is definitely an improvement, although your first one, there's no question about it, but it just does not, for me anyway, work as what we had in mind for that part of Route One. And one of the things that can be done is we can get peer review for architecture. I'm not saying I'm asking for it. I'm just saying if there's confusion, and we're not sure what it is that we're looking for, we can always ask for peer review for architecture. So I just want to put that out there as a possibility. I'm not asking for it right now, okay? And if there, if it, you know, there's also, you know, staff understands pretty well what it is we're looking for when it comes to architecture. So those are my two things, let alone control and architecture. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Roger?
Thank you. On the parking and everything, is this the plan right now? Is this what's before us? Is this what they're going to be doing?
Frankly, I'm a little bit confused at what we're looking at there, still. No, it's not what was presented to you.
I thought there'd be some confusion. The plan is in front of you, I think, in your book.
To the curved one?
Yes.
That's an access?
Yes.
That's the one. You, in your comments, recommended something along this rectangular shape over here.
So that's what I've shown right there, are the two different proposed or possible layouts. I myself and the client are leaning towards your recommended layout. We like that one better, where there's only one curb cut. Again, as Jay mentioned, there are going to be a couple of things, something's got to give with this layout. There are a couple of things that do not meet your design standards.
Well, even if you went with this one here, it would seem to me that whoever is the tenant on that side, when they want to go south, they're just going to cut across the front and go out the, go out there.
Go out here?
No, no, they're going to cut across the front right there.
And that's a possibility. We designed it, it's designed as a one-way access. It would be difficult, but yes, you would find drivers who would try and could do it. You're right.
Especially the people who work there.
You're right. The right-only exit on from that side is very unattractive from our perspective as well.
Roger, may I ask a point of clarification? With your new design, are you proposing to maintain it as a one? I guess I thought I heard that you were proposing with your new design to cut off that right out only, and you would make that two-way in front of the building. Is that what you're thinking of heading towards based on staff and peer review comments?
That's correct. We are thinking of, yes, listening to your recommendations, this would be two-way now instead of one.
And no curb cut over here.
And so the impact would be to that 15-foot streetscape, but what it would do would be to get us down to the one curb cut and less traffic movements on Route One.
Exactly.
So it's really, okay. Just because I wasn't clear on that point, so I wanted to jump in since we were on it. Thank you, Roger. I'm sorry.
And in the staff comments, I believe it was maybe even better of your comment, Jay, maybe not, but if it's good, I'll take credit.
Yeah.
It's a good comment. You asked us to look into how with our minimum two-way widths could be, and at the minimum would be 18 feet, and even that is pushing it. As shown, it's 18 feet. Any more, and again, it would encroach potentially off the property, which is, I'm not even sure if that's doable, or closer to the building, which again, is not advisable.
Now, when you talk about the two-way entrance and exit, it's mentioned in here, it's going to be at the front of the building. So are you talking about moving the existing one, that curb cut to the front of the building, or leaving it where it is now?
I'm not sure where, yeah, where it says the front of the building, but yeah, this would be the curb cut in both schemes. This stays right where it is.
I looked at this site, too, and I noticed that on that side of the building, the gravel actually goes right up to that stream. It's basically pine.
Right here?
Yeah.
And again, that was part of the site challenge, is making use of what's already been a gravel site over here, but we can't get to that site and then meet.
Sure.
So again, that's, yes, that's, yeah.
And just out of curiosity, I think somebody mentioned at a previous meeting that that stream has no name or anything, it's just, it's a no-name stream or?
I believe it's unnamed. I looked for it, yeah.
Does it go anywhere?
It does go someplace. It is not what it, the one that's will, that abuts and empties into None Such at the golf course that has a name. It's the one right next to it that does not have a name, but also empties out into None Such there.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Nick?
Yeah, so if I, if I'm following correctly, no curb cut on the right side, and you're going to have a larger parking area on the right, my right, and you want to turn that in front of the building two-way, cars crossing over each other. So you're asking, you're asking for my opinion on whether or not I'm sacrificing a buffer or curb cut. I'm saying sacrifice the buffer, the 15-foot buffer. If you've got to sacrifice it, sacrifice it. I think that's the first thing, the least important in my mind. I'd rather, I'd rather see that than encroaching further on the unnamed stream, or, you know, the second curb cut, which I think I'm with you, I don't necessarily like the second curb cut. So that would be my input. Other than that, I agree with, I semi-agree with Susan. I would say you have challenges because you have a flat roof, and a lot of our design standards and the New England styles all have wonderful, beautiful roof lines and things like that. I got to believe, though, there's a better way to make it appear less pain road and, you know, and more, more to the area if we can. There's got to be something, and good luck being creative with it, because you've got a flat roof. But it does, it's very boxy. So I semi-agree with Susan. Look at it. That's about it for right now, from what I'm seeing, but thank you.
Thank you.
Ron?
Yeah, I agree with Nick about giving up the buffer for, you know, and having the one curb cut and making it two-way. I do have a question, I guess I'm not sure of it. Is the eye doctor going to occupy the whole building, or is he going to only occupy part of the building and lease out the rest?
Occupy part, lease out the rest.
Okay, we have no idea if he has a potential LSE going in there?
I do not believe he has any potential LSE, yeah.
If I have this correct, then parking would be an issue as to what could go in there, the amount of available parking spaces.
That's true. We did look at this a little bit at a sketch plan. I believe we can provide for almost everything, all uses, except for a couple, and I have to go back and look for you, but nearly everything is four spaces or less per 1,000 square feet, and this allows for that in that space.
What about walkways? I guess, you may have mentioned it, but I lost it somewhere. Is there going to be a walkway in front of the building? Is there something now?
We do show a sidewalk along Route One to be constructed. There's no internal walks. We have two connections, sorry, one connection right now with the newer layout. We may have two connections to that sidewalk.
Thank you. I missed it, and I think that's all I have for right now, too.
Thanks, Ron. John?
Hello, Matt. Going later on, everybody discussed anything I had in mind.
Thank you.
Mike?
I might suggest that next time you put up your rendition on the top and the current view of cliffs on the bottom, kind of keep reminding us how much of an improvement we're working on.
I think I had existing elevations in the packet, yeah.
That's great. I love that.
That's on my line.
I mean, you've come a long way, certainly, and there's always can be improvement. I understand that the building, the building itself.
Perfect. Oh, dear.
The building can only be, you know, you can only put so much of a shine on a sneaker, so to speak, but I think you're getting there, and I appreciate your effort. And I applaud your continuing to tweak to make it look a little bit more, a little more regional, New England. I do hope that you're able to screen the HVAC systems, though, because I've seen, I've seen these flat roofs, and boy, those HVAC systems really take over. So I'd hate for you to go through all this effort and time and money, and then have those HVAC systems be the first thing one sees. Because I think the elevation of the building is such, it's a little bit lower, Route One also, I mean, I think it would be easier. So even if you have to increase that, what do you call it, parapet?
Parapet, yeah.
Some sort of fence or whatever. I don't really care, I don't really mind the two cots, but I'm not a traffic engineer. But I, the fact that you're in agreement with staff and others, that's fine with me, certainly. And I don't mind giving up some of the buffer along Route One, but some will be retained, would it not? And can you tell me what the width would be? I mean, we're not saying there's no buffer, or there's no opportunity to landscape between Route One and your...
Oh, no, no, no. You're retaining, yeah.
About 18 feet.
Yeah. And that's enough to work with, I would think. The sidewalk, I think it might be kind of a nice design element from the sidewalk to allow for connection. I know that a lot of folks on may be walking on Route One, at that part of Route One. There is a sidewalk currently, or is it just an easement for future?
I don't think there's a paved, raised, I don't know what you would call it, raved...
It's all curb cut, and I think there's like one little paved island, maybe right in front of the building.
Not a sidewalk.
Everything else is curb cut, pull in and out as you want, so this is a...
I was going to suggest, if there was any kind of like a sidewalk, you'd make a connection where someone could go from the sidewalk to the front door, through the landscape.
Yeah, and...
We've got one here.
Oh, you do? Okay.
And but as Jay pointed out, there are, there's no sidewalk on either side of our parking lot.
Well, the fact that there's an easement for one, I mean, we've seen that. For years, we've seen easements, and then eventually do get built, so that's the important part. Any issues in your mind with that first parking stall, when you come in off Route One, right to the right? If one is to occupy, yeah, backing, no.
Yeah, the first one you pointed to.
Previous one, yeah. I think it just, it just tells me that you might want to look at that a couple times just to make sure that if that's occupied, someone's going to want to back out, and you've got somebody coming off Route One that needs to get off the main, the main road. I think the only business that doesn't adhere to that philosophy is Dunkin' Donuts.
And may I point out, there's a similarity here.
Yeah, so we don't want that. We don't want stacking. I guess, I guess my question is, is are you right at the minimum for parking for most, if not all, uses that you would envision?
No, I think if I go back and look at it, I think we have two or three extra spaces.
Yeah, if one was to go, I might vote for that one, that's all. And kind of truck traffic, I mean, you have a dumpster. Can trucks move in and out of that site okay?
We did go, we did meet with the fire inspector. Again, all of these comments pertains to our layout with the two curb cuts, and quite frankly, I do have to go back, and if we are going to use this other layout, I'm going to have to talk with him about that, because he particularly liked being able to drive right out.
Oh, sure.
Circulation for a fire truck very easy.
Right.
But yeah, we anticipate that a dumpster truck or garbage truck can move in there. They will have to do some backing up. We don't anticipate a lot of large truck traffic with the proposed use. That being said, we don't know who the future tenant will be, so there is that possibility.
I know that on some plans over the many years, we've had sites that are very tight, and we've talked about as a condition that those kinds of vehicle, dumpster traffic, or if you're getting oil delivery and things like that, be done outside of normal business hours. But if you can demonstrate to me that it works fine, then I'm fine with that, too.
Thank you.
Just an idea. I wonder if the fire engine, I mean, the experts will be able to, I mean, you could probably just still go out that way, Route One, not have a formal cut, but, you know, they still go out if they have to.
You know, this thought occurred to me right here?
Yeah. I mean, it's not going to be a guardrail there.
For what it's worth, when staff started to look at this new design, that was one of our first thoughts, as well as we got, we had, needed to talk to our friends at the fire department, and so I did have an opportunity to speak with our commercial code fire inspector. And he said, you know, understanding the size of the building, that's going to be, I believe it's a sprinkled building, if I remember it correct.
Correct.
He was comfortable with being able to pull in front of the building, and given that it's sort of a limited, it's not that big of a building, that they could back, then that, you know, once they're done doing it, that they could back, make their three-point turn, and come back out onto Route One. So he obviously hasn't seen details of the design, but at least conceptually, before we put it, put it as a staff recommendation, the applicant spends a lot of time thinking about it, we wanted to be sure it was at least a viable option for mall departments. And so, again, there's devils in the details, but at least conceptually, we're...
There's a curb design keep cot, if they can go out over from internally.
There's that as well.
Fire truck, certain as well.
And my final comment might be just that the sign location will change with this newest...
Absolutely. Most likely, somewhere in this corner.
Yeah, and low as opposed to high, monument as opposed to pole. But that's it. Thank you very much. I think you've come a long way, and I appreciate the reuse of that area, the reuse of that building, and look forward to your next visit. Thank you, Mr. John.
Thank you.
Sorry, I always do this, but when I go first. Does this property, I'm trying to picture from my mind, does it dip down off Route One? Not as much as Dunkin' Donuts does, does it? Not going to be, because Dunkin' Donuts is a problem not only because of the queuing, but because it's queuing and it dips down, you know? This, I don't think we're going to have a queuing problem, because we're not going to have any drive-through, but there are going to be people coming in and going out at the same time, and I just want to make sure that the grade isn't going to be an issue.
I don't believe it's as aggressive a hill as Dunkin' Donuts.
We never asked that question before, so I've learned to ask that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, regarding the unknown tenant, whoever goes in there will realize how many parking spaces they have, and if they need more parking spaces, they just won't go there.
It's kind of how we feel.
That's probably truly obvious, if you can't just...
With regards to the signage, can I make one comment? I don't, you have some sheets, we provided those, and I just heard some comments that signage be low, and that's not what we're showing, so...
Oh, God, I don't...
Oh, I see. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Am I skipping? I don't mean to speak out of turn.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I do see that now. Thank you. That's, to me, that's wonderful. That's lovely. I looked at it quick, and I saw it as a sign you have on the building, but I'm seeing that right here. I'm seeing that right here.
Not to speak to you, Mike, but I think when, when you say low, you're talking about not a big pole sign.
Not a pole mounted, I just, uh, it's just my personal, you know? I know they're allowed, but, you know, I, I remember one, uh, one conversation formerly with Main Bank, uh, no, uh, Banger Savings, and they were, they were proposing a pole-mounted sign, and Sue might remember.
I do.
And, um, and they ended up putting the sign in that is there today, and, I mean, just so much more inviting to me. Plus a pole-mounted sign in many ways, I think it misses the, an individual's ability to, to view it really effectively. I mean, you gotta, you know, move your head and trees and whatever. This is great. Thank you.
Corey?
Sure.
If, it's on L-102, is this-
That's correct.
If, if he's gonna move the sign down to the, by your entryway, then you're gonna have this monument sign there, that could be blocking the view, couldn't it?
Be interesting to exit, how tall is it?
It would be set. It would be set back far enough that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be hitting your sight lines as you come out. It'd be down here somewhere, where your attorney vehicle would be out here, that it wouldn't-
We, we can locate it and I'll check and make sure that, on a field assessment, that it's not part of, it's not blocking your exit, exit view coming.
I mean, I, I agree, the monument signs are nicer, but if it's gonna block, you know, your, your vision because of its location, then-
Yeah, I think that's probably the second comment. I've heard that maybe it's worth having the traffic engineer take a look at. One has to do with the, the throat coming off Route One in that first parking space. Do we have enough queuing length there? And then this other question about being sure wherever this sign ultimately gets located on the next set that we are providing adequate sight distance, so, um, I think that's, those are good points for the applicant to take a look at as they prepare for another round.
Thanks, Jay.
Uh, so I, I also favor the, the single curb cut alternative and I agree that, um, again, as we talked about, it's a highly constrained site and we have to kind of prioritize and it seems clear to me that eliminating a curb cut, uh, is more improved than, um, having a few more feet of buffering, as long as it's executed the right way. It also, um, gets the snow storage out of the, the, the stream buffer area and, um, I think, again, you know, we're, we're talking about a repurposed property here and, and I think, um, that'll be a, a significant net improvement, just in terms of the, the site, site layout and movement, not even, not even getting to the, to the architecture yet. Um, also appreciate the, the approach on handling stormwater, um, and sort of respecting that, that stream resource back there. Um, in terms of the architecture, um, I think it's, it's definitely an improvement from the first stab that we saw. Um, you know, I, like Mr. Wood, I, I, I think it is important to, to, to keep in mind, and I'm not suggesting that Susan isn't, I think, you know, you started off saying this, you know, you're thrilled about this and I think, um, so I don't think any of us are looking for a, you know, a, a salt box or something like that. But, um, and I think it has moved, uh, in a good direction. Um, you know, sort of look forward to seeing, um, what you can come up with to maybe tweak things a little bit within reason, knowing that you do have a flat roof and you have that existing box that's there now. Um, and one comment I'll make, um, it's sort of a minor thing, but I'm generally not much of a fan of canvas, um, canopies. They seem to, they tend to fade and tear over time. Um, and I'm not, I don't wanna suggest that I, I would insist on something a lot more expensive or something like that, or that I'm gonna try and design the, the building by any means, but that's just a personal thing for me in terms of things that, you know, how, how well it'll stand the test of time and just sort of a, just a, my two cents on that, I guess. Um, but beyond that, I think there've been some good comments about the, about the site design and, um, we'll, we'll see how that all develops in terms of the, the fire access and everything else that's been mentioned. And, uh, we'll look forward to seeing the next iteration. Is there anything more that you need from us at this point in order to move toward final?
I don't think so, no. We've got a couple things definitely to tweak and, um, hopefully we'll have our packet on Friday or Monday.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
As mentioned, items 11 and 12 were tabled, so we're on to the town planner's report.
Uh, yep, I guess the only item I'd like to remind board members of tonight is that we have a host of plans to sign. I think there's gonna be at least six plan sheets to sign, so, um, just keep that in mind after the meeting. Um, that's all I have at this moment.
Administrative amendment report.
Yep, uh, one item to report, um, the freestanding sign on Lot Seven, um, we, they proposed a, to relocate the freestanding sign. Um, board members may recall the freestanding sign was to sort of be in the middle of the site, there's a-
You're talking about Gallery Place.
Gallery, I'm sorry, yes, on Gallery Boulevard, the new building that's going in there. Um, and they proposed to locate it, uh, there's an entrance just across from Texas Roadhouse. It's a shared driveway with, uh, Walmart in this site, um, and they're finding that as they're out on site, that this is probably gonna be their primary entrance. Um, the detailing is gonna be the same as the Walmart sign that's out there. Um, obviously it's gonna have different names on it, but outside of that, the detailing's the same, so, uh, reviewed that with the board chair and, um, that was administratively approved.
Thank you. Any planning board correspondence? We already referenced the email we have regarding the cell tower. Planning board comments?
I'll just hit one real quick. Uh, and I'm only gonna have like four more meetings, so I'll get my voice in now. Regarding the proposed amendment, the zoning we did before, and I mentioned it before, I have, I have one question. Facility would not create unhealthy or offensive odors. So, what's the process if there's a violation? So, actually, I've got it right here.
You have the violation process?
So, the fine, the fine, I think long-range planning and staff, I mean, the council needs to take a look at, uh, Section 4C and just look at that. If any firm corporation being the owner having control of the use of the building structure violates provision, that'll be fined no less than a hundred dollars, no more than twenty-five, hundred. How do you determine how offensive that odor is and where do you determine the fine level? It's, it's just a devil of a detail and that's, I don't need to go anymore. I think we need to look at that. We don't need a major issue, we got a big stake and, well, you guys are not gonna fine you twenty-five hundred and they sue the town because they think it's too, too much money. Just a little devil of detail, that's it. No more to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just make a quick comment. Um, as, I think everyone knows, we're now on the Vine, has opened down at Dunston, and, um, I've been in there and I, it's, I think what everyone hoped it would be and-
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that's a, a great development for, for that end of town. Um, in terms of, uh, the planning board business, they will be coming in front of us at some point, I don't know if they're on the calendar yet. Um, the, the prior chair of this board had, had given them administrative approval because they were, they were just reusing an existing, uh, building and, um, when they went to file for their certificate of occupancy, it turned out there were some areas where they had deviated from that administrative approval, uh, including, uh, you, I'm sure have sensed Jay's sensitivity to, uh, HVAC and, and restaurant venting and, and things like that. Um, so there were some, some, some things along those lines that sort of need to be cleaned up. Um, the solution from the town's perspective was to secure a performance bond in the amount that's intended to be equivalent to the value of whatever improvements might be needed to, uh, ultimately comply with what was approved, but, um, it was agreed that, um, that was going well beyond, uh, any further administrative approvals. So, coming in front of us, I think they, they wanted to come in front of us and kind of explain how that all unfolded and we can determine at that point how we feel about where things stand, but, uh, that's just something to look forward to.
I guess this'll be a few months. Um, they do have performance guarantees typically for one year. They're just opened up their business, so, you know, I think we'll probably see them once they get into a bit of a groove, but, um-
Right, and another good example of a repurposed building and I think we're all excited that they're there and we just have to sort of clean that up, so.
I could, go ahead. You know, I've, trying to bite my tongue a little bit more. I'm trying, uh, and try, 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 I may. Um, as it relates to cell towers, I have a, I have a fundamental issue with what we just experienced tonight, and I, I think it needs to be said, and I don't know if there's a remedy, I don't know if it's worth a discussion, I don't know if it's worth a meeting, but here's the problem. We just had an applicant say we can't be responsible for anything beyond our 100 by 100-foot lot. However, their impact, their project impacts much, at far, far greater extent than the 100 by 100 lease that they hold. And it goes back to the ordinance, and I feel like there, there needs to be some hashing out of how that 25 acres plays into the five acres that plays into their 100 by 100-foot lease. I have no clear answer in my mind as to how they should all interrelate, because there has to be, there has to be some relationship from their project that they propose towards us being able to remedy impacts that they will have on the people around them. And that, I think, is the real, you guys have watched me, I mean, watched me really struggle with cell phone tower proposals, and that's the crux of it. How do you hold somebody accountable when they can sit there and claim I only own a thousand square feet, but their impact is actually seen two miles away? And, and that's gonna be a continual struggle, I think, based on the way the, the ordinance is currently constructed. So, I, like I said, I don't even know if I'm, I'm making, um, a bunch of sense to you guys, or if I'm just kind of, I need it to vent, but it, it's, it's a constant battle for me and I don't know what makes it better. I don't know if it's a meeting, um, with, with staff and this board to kind of, or the town attorney, just to go over how those all interrelate and how it relates to how we need to do our job. I really struggle with it and I, you know, I, I just wanted to put that there for food for thought.
I think, you know, I think we, we initially struggled right out of the gate with the, sort of, the priority of location methodology, and I think we ultimately got some good direction and feedback from staff and, and town attorney on that, and so, whatever the venue is, um, you know, that may be, may be worth pursuing off-line.
Done that three times tonight. It's not a bad idea when these things come up, I mean, this is what member, um, planning board member comments are for. And make this comment, refer it back to the ordinance committee. I mean, we're, we're the ones who implement these ordinances, and if we come up with issues in the ordinances that don't work for us, then the ordinance committee is the place to go, or in this case, long-range planning committee, you know, it's the same thing, basically. And I think that, that's something that Jay has written down, yes?
Mm-hmm.
And the next time we, we have, um, an opportunity, we can take a look at it. Very valid, very valid.
I'd like to follow, follow up on that, because I think what Sue has happened, hits the nail on the head from my perspective. And that is that what we're doing is following what has been handed to us by the ordinance committee. And if, if all of the details fit within the ordinance that we have, then we can't go beyond that. But I think we can go back to the ordinance committee and say, wait a minute, this, this is not clear. Uh, like you said, the ramifications of only a small square go way beyond that square and maybe we oughta do something about that. I concur with that a hundred percent. But I think as, as it currently is written and handed to us, we're limited. And, and, um, I can tell you from having family ownership of woodland, that, uh, ownership of land has been tested in the courts, and you can't just arbitrarily tell somebody what they can do, if they own the land, what they can or cannot do with it. I mean, sure, there were, there were limitations. So, I think that you, you, Nick, you hit it right on the head, at least you, you opened up, I think, to a great idea that maybe we oughta discuss what we are comfortable with and what we feel is really, really pushing us into a corner and come up with some ideas or recommendations or suggestions to go back to the ordinance committee to clean that up. I concur with that a hundred percent.
Thanks. Anything else, Roger?
Yeah, um, I don't think this is a very unusual, um, um, suggestion on Nick's part, because this is kind of a, this is, uh, we're new to this, and, uh, I think the people who came up with this ordinance really struggled to come up with what they felt was a good, good ordinance, but it's, I, I don't think it's very, I don't think it's uncommon to find, once we get into this whole process, to find some, some areas where we have to address it, so, um, and I, I'm sure we're not the only community in the whole country that's, that's dealing with this, so other, we could probably learn something from some other communities as to how they're dealing with this.
And in that vein, I think part of what makes the dynamic challenging at times is that we're, we're sort of feeling our way through some of this with the newly mentioned ordinance and we're, we're dealing with very sophisticated applicants.
Very.
Who know, who have done this in many, many communities and sometimes presume to talk, sort of lecture us about how our ordinance works and what, what's really intended, and so I think that just makes it all the more important to make sure that we have our ducks in a row and we understand how much discretion we have and, um, understand, and make sure that we're, that the ordinance is achieving what it really was intended to, so.
I, I think they're also very, very keenly aware of the visual aspects of these towers, wherever they place them, you know? That seems to be the number one issue and-
Family complaint.
So.
One more comment on that. Um, perhaps it would be a good thing for us to have a workshop around our experience now that we've worked with this ordinance for a bit, where do we see problems? Is it that we don't understand it all that well? Is it that there's something actually that conflicts? I don't really know it that well myself, except to know that now we need to know more than we do maybe, but that's just a suggestion.
I agree with that.
Thanks. Anyone else? No? I'll move to adjourn. Favor? Thank you.
Far from one lead, Angela Blanchett with-